Right.
It's a soft.
Yeah.
Really did. Pretty much.
Okay.
Oh, that's like good, because I like appreciate like how good it was. And I made like a really good impression on me. Like, it's stressful and I think I have so much stuff to worry about.
Yeah.
Nobody knows.
All right. Good evening. I would like to welcome you all to the February eighth, two thousand and twenty-two regular meeting of the Auburn Planning Board. We'll begin with roll call of the members, starting over here on my left.
Darren Finnegan.
Tony Ferraro.
Josh Daigle.
Riley Bergeron.
Stacy LeBlanc.
Brian Dubois.
And I'm Matthew Duval, Chair. Item number two on our agenda is the minutes. Any comments? Amendments from the board on the minutes? Hearing none, I'll need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. All right. Item number three is actually just an explanation, so this is going to take a little bit. So tonight, because of ongoing concerns about the pandemic, we've broken the meeting up into two formal sessions, which means there will be two general public comment periods, but I'll get to that in a little bit. The first session, which will run from now until seven thirty, will will take up two items, the phosphorus ornament ordinance amendment and the Graceland area zoning amendment. We'll take a brief break after that, at which time we will address between seven forty and nine thirty P M. We will address the Court Street area zoning amendment and the Washington Street zoning amendment. In general, I just want to summarize how each item on the agenda will run. We will begin. I will open the item. We'll hear from staff. They'll provide a staff report. After the staff report, there will be time for the members of the board to ask questions of staff. Then we will open it up for public comment, and during public comment, we will ask people will have anyone who wishes to address the board on the issue. We'll have three minutes to do so. We'll start first with the people in this room. Then we'll invite the people who are in the community room to come speak to us. And then lastly, we will invite the people who are on Zoom to speak to the board. If you are on Zoom during the in-person public comments, please raise your hand if you do wish to comment, and we will call on you on the order in which we see your hand raised. Following public comment, the board will deliberate and then take action. That action can either be making a recommendation to city council or tabling the issue till a further meeting. All right. With that, we'll move on to item four on the agenda, a public hearing on the phosphorus ordinance, section sixty dash one zero seven zero amendment. This change addresses the utilization of the most current design standards set forth by the Maine Department of Environmental Protection to treat phosphorus export for a project or projects over five hundred and seventy-five square feet of ground floor area within the Taylor Pond and Lake Auburn watershed. The technical guide for the design standards of phosphorus control best management practices will be updated from the May nineteen ninety to the March two thousand and sixteen version. Staff?
Thank you. So this is really just an update. It's a technical manual that is utilized by the Maine Department of Environmental Protection. The the version that we have right now is nineteen ninety, so it's basically outdated. If someone, if an engineer was doing a design or site evaluator was doing a design for a development of five hundred and seventy-five square feet or more in the Taylor Pond or the or the Lake Auburn watershed, they essentially couldn't find the nineteen ninety model. So the version of that manual. So this just basically updates it to the latest volume, which is March of two thousand and sixteen. And the biggest piece, the biggest takeaway, I think that, and we'll go through some of the next slide here. The biggest takeaway is it utilizes the most current design manual available for phosphorus control. implements the use of low-impact development techniques, LID. That'll be a term that we're going to use quite often. We're going to introduce that probably in the next planning board meeting for further protecting the Lake Auburn watershed and how that's implemented on specific developments. And then it really focuses on infiltration techniques, best management practice from point from a point source kind of stormwater runoff. So rather than collecting it in a big area, we're collecting little little subcatchments in in the watershed and in the development, and we're treating it there. And here's some examples. Vegetated buffer strips, very simple construction design where, you know, you're picking up phosphorus that's running off of a disturbed area, and you're putting it into a trench that has stone, a vegetated swale, and you may have an underdrain, and you may have some media in there that that treats the stormwater runoff. So that's one, another one. Roof infiltration and trench drywall. You know, oftentimes are from the roof, from our roofs on, you know, we think about our homes. It all gets, it sheets off the roof of our home and then gets captured in our gutters. And that gets channelized into one specific location. That creates erosion in that spot. Right? So that's a point source pollution area specifically in that on that particular spot. So you would put a basically an infiltration trench where it would break up the momentum and the speed and distribute the water in the in that specific location. So those are a couple of examples. These are, these are really specifically from the B M P manual, volume two that we're referencing. So and this is kind of what it would look like. There's a couple, a couple more, grassy swales, rain gardens. We think about small lots in the Taylor Pond watershed. You know, if you talk to an engineer, they'll oftentimes say, hey, the best way to treat phosphorus is through buffers. And what you need with buffers is you need additional space. You need, you need land, right, to sheet flow that, to to channelize the water and then put it through what's called a level lip spreader that hits an area and spreads it out over a wide area and treats treats the stormwater that goes across the land, and you need a vegetated buffer to do that, to get the the basically the phosphorus entrapment of the of the water quality. So so in lots that are very, very small, using this point source LID technique is really extravagant, and it really helps the watersheds. And so, you know, I think, again, as we develop more and more developments, we'll we'll be requesting these specific items. Staff will be requesting these specific items, and our code enforcement officers will be requesting this, these kinds of treatment in real confined spaces, and I think it works well for the watershed. You know, it's really just a very basic text change. You know, we're going from a technical guide that was referenced in nineteen ninety to the most current in two thousand and sixteen.
Great. Thank you. Any questions from the board for staff?
Yeah, I have one. Would you summarize this as being a more lenient amendment or a more responsible amendment to the watershed?
I would, I would say this is a more responsible amendment to the watershed. Absolutely. Thank you.
Would you say making this change brings us current day?
I'm sorry?
Would you say making this change makes us current day? So if we're in line with the Maine Department of Environmental Protection, that brings us current day versus back in nineteen ninety?
Correct. Yes. This is the current day design manual. If a if a design engineer was looking for the manual, this is the current day manual that they would find to do to treat phosphorus. But I pull specific items from that, and the specific items, and it's very, it applies a lot to the Taylor Pond watershed in particular, where you've got a lot of these small lots. And people are always asking to do some type of development out there. And it's very hard to apply a buffer treatment when you don't have the land area. So this really helps out the watershed, and we can really apply it at a code enforcement level. So I think it's very important.
Is this something that's going to, we're going to have to look again, look at again in the near future? Like, do you know how often that standard changes, or D E P comes up with a new revised policy that we might have to look at in a couple of years?
You know, I think engineering standards change, but this, I've been doing this kind of design and work since probably nineteen ninety-six. And LID standards has been a topic or a standard probably since two thousand and three, two thousand and six. The the actual manual may be updated as EPA provides new guidance and regulations through the Clean Water Act gets improved. But those come periodically. But, you know, we're really, we're sixteen, we're essentially twenty-six years behind the ball here. So we're just kind of getting back into the back end of the game and and really what our current, you know, licensed engineers would be using to do do the designs.
So I have one question. If you could explain to me the five hundred and seventy-five square feet standard and what what would meet that, but what wouldn't meet that?
So it's it's any kind of, it's any any kind of development. So anything that would constitute impervious area. So that could be a structure. It could be a parking lot. So it's anything that doesn't allow water to get into the ground. So those are the, those are the essential pieces of the five hundred and seventy-five square feet. And each of those, we evaluate that on a case-by-case basis. You know, anything under the definition from an engineer's standpoint as a structure, so roadways, parking lots, things like that would constitute treatment. In this, in that particular case, if the project or projects, it could be multiple, right? Could be they're replacing, you know, new culverts, and they're adding new, you know, a greater amount of of, you know, width to the road in that particular location to get whatever they need, and they add, so it could be five or six of those culvert replacements, and the total sum is five seventy-five. So then it triggers phosphorus control ordinance, and they've got to implement a phosphorus control plan.
Great. So if I'm hearing you correctly, if I build a shed that's, say, three hundred square feet, and then two years later, I expand my driveway by three hundred square feet.
You're in it.
And how does the city track that?
Through a permitting, a permitting process. And, you know, each parcel is tracked by a P I D and the property identification number. And so we have all the permits in that specific location. Whenever somebody files a permit, we're going back. The code enforcement officer, myself, is looking at that specific information, and we're letting them know. You know, hey, you're at the, you're at the point where you're going to need to address this through a phosphorus control plan.
Great. Thank you. Any further questions for staff? Great. At this time, I would need a motion to open public comment.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? At this time, I would invite any members of the public who wish to address the board on this topic to step forward. I remind you that you have three minutes to address, in which to make your comments. And if you would start by giving your name and address, I would appreciate it. Is there anybody in this room that wishes to address the board at this time?
Nobody.
And there's no, is there anybody on Zoom who wishes to address the board?
There's no one here on Zoom for this one.
Great. Thank you. Seeing no one who wishes to address the board, I need a motion to close public comment.
So moved.
Thanks. Second?
Second.
All those in favor? All right. Thoughts from the board on this?
So I think it makes perfect sense. I think, like, as was noted, it's twenty-six years behind, and I think it's bringing us current. So I I see no issue with it.
Great. Thank you. Other comments from the board? No, I tend to agree. So if there are no, there's no further deliberation from the board, I would need a motion.
I make a motion to recommend to the city council to amend chapter sixty, article twelve, division two, section sixty dash ten seventy of the Auburn Code of Ordinance to update. All projects subject to review under the provisions of this division shall submit a phosphorus control plan and maintenance provisions meeting the standards set forth in design criteria of the Maine Department of Environmental Protection, Main Storm Water Management Design Manual, Phosphorus Control Manual, Volume Two, March two thousand and sixteen.
Thank you. So I have a motion to make a recommendation to city council. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you. Any debate on this motion? Hearing none, I'll call a vote. All those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Thank you. So next item on our agenda. Before I proceed to that, I want to point out that we do have one regular member who is absent tonight, and we have an associate member, Mr. Daigle, who is going to be serving as a regular member tonight. So thank you. Item number five, a public hearing on a zoning update to the Graceland area. A hundred and forty-eight acres from agricultural and resource protection zone to commercial development district. Is it commercial development, or is it general business?
So the the comprehensive plan characterizes that it's commercial development district.
But the zone is actually general business, right? So it's actually from the zoning change is agricultural resource protection zone to general business one. And that's a hundred and forty-eight acres. Approximately thirty-seven acres are not shown as C D D, which is Commercial Development District in the comprehensive plan. But the council did approve utilizing the Auburn watershed study. In that study, they suggested moving the watershed boundary out, and from that, we are suggesting the proposed boundary out to match the new watershed. So in other words, the comprehensive plan recommends a hundred and eleven acres be moved into this commercial development district. The council has approved using the data from the watershed study to add another thirty-seven acres. And so that's where we get the one forty-eight.
Yes, it is.
Okay, great. Thanks. So staff, I probably just did part of your staff report. Sorry about that.
Yeah.
Thank you. As you mentioned, our comprehensive plan uses some different nomenclature for the proposed zoning districts than our existing ordinance for different district names. One goal of the plan is to reduce the number of zoning districts over time by combining similar districts. Staff contemplated with the implementation of this change, contemplated creating the new commercial development district zone. But instead, we're recommending just moving the existing boundary of the general business district to include the referenced one hundred and forty-eight acres as shown on the map. We included an excerpt from the description of the C D D district in the comprehensive plan. This change will make the boundary adjustment to the localized area and leave the combining of the general business and general business two, which was really the purpose of this new C D D zone referenced in the comp plan, is to eventually merge those two zones into a new district with a single name. As you can see in the staff report, the text recommendations will eventually do that. What we're suggesting is that this time, the easiest way to do that is make it part of the general business zone. And then when we have a discussion about merging the two districts, we can address the naming of the district at that time. But the uses are essentially the same as the general business listed in the comp plan for the C D D zone. Uses and and development standards. The current proposal also includes an adjustment to the Lake Auburn watershed district zoning overlay that is to match the science that has shown to be the actual drainage boundary to the physical Lake Auburn watershed. So the, I just wanted to point out, the two thousand and ten comprehensive plan recommended that initial hundred and eleven acres. The two thousand and twenty-one comprehensive plan, with the benefit of the information from the Lake Auburn watershed study, suggested that we move the boundary to match the physical watershed boundary of the area. The revised boundary, shown in blue on the map that you have on the screen right now, as well as what was in the staff report. The Lake Auburn watershed pages recommending this change were attached to the staff report. We can go through those in more detail if you want to. And we provided the actual definition of the Lake Auburn watershed overlay district from the ordinance. That definition is the Lake Auburn watershed district is that section of the city in which surface and subsurface waters ultimately flow or drain into Lake Auburn. As such, the section is delineated on a watershed map and survey by the City Water District on file in the Office of the Water, City Water District, the City Department of Planning and Permitting Services, and the City Clerk. The Lake Auburn watershed district shall be superimposed over underlying zoning districts with such section. Permitted uses in the underlying district shall continue to be subject to compliance with the provisions of the Lake Auburn watershed district. So this district isn't like our other zoning districts. This actually sits over the top of whatever zoning districts exist and adds restrictions to that. Because by definition, the watershed district boundaries should match the match the actual drainage boundaries, we now have the information that confirms that we should adjust the watershed district map to match those areas that actually physically drain to the lake. To do that, we're suggesting that we remove the 140 acres, 148 acres. That line is not something that staff came up with. It is an analysis of all of the topographic changes from the gravel mining that's occurred in that area over time. A lot of material has been removed, causing those gravel pits to drain internally rather than potentially towards the lake where the slopes existed prior to the material removal. And we have really extensive groundwater monitoring data in this section of Auburn because of the presence of the gravel pits and their license requirements and the presence of the city ash and landfill. We're extremely fortunate that the water actually moves away from the lake. This was a horrible place, not knowing the groundwater movements, to site those landfills when they were sited there. If this didn't drain away from the lake, I think we'd have experienced a lot of problems with our water supply already. But fortunately it does and provides the opportunity for these pits to be reused as they're exhausted for gravel and sand mining purposes. They can be reused for some other development purpose that could provide housing opportunities or business opportunities and additional tax revenues to the city, close to our existing mall area, connected to our existing mall area, and has the ability to be connected to utilities. We're working on exactly how that connection would happen for water and sewer, but that would have to happen for any intensive development of this land. Staff suggests that the board discuss the proposals tonight, hold a public hearing. We recommend based on the information provided from the Lake Auburn watershed study, the zoning and development opportunities and the recommendations adopted as part of the comprehensive plan, that after that public hearing, you take any feedback into consideration. There's certainly the potential to adjust the proposal, but ultimately to move forward with the proposal based on the adopted policy documents and the science that shows that this area does not drain to Lake Auburn. We've suggested some findings, one through four in the staff report. One, that the 2010 and now 2020 comprehensive plans recommend expanding the commercial zoning in this area to include the proposed area on the map with minor difference. As you can see here, the 2010 comp plan recommended including this whole parcel in the commercial district, so there's two small pieces that still drain towards Lake Auburn potentially. Those, any development that occurs in those corners would have to do one of two things, meet the phosphorus standards for the Lake Auburn watershed, or show that as part of the development that they've adjusted the contours, the grading of the land to ensure that that drains internal to the pit and is physically outside of the Lake Auburn watershed at that point. The two small areas, as I said, would be required to either drain internally, out of the watershed, or meet the phosphorus standards. The boundary of the Lake Auburn watershed overlay district, this is another finding, has been shown to be different than the actual drainage boundary, and this adjustment would correct that to match the physical drainage boundaries of the watershed. This proposal can be implemented without detriment to Lake Auburn and is recommended by both the comprehensive plan and the Lake Auburn watershed study. Happy to answer any questions related to that.
Thank you. Any questions from the board for staff?
Yes, I have one.
Yep.
Memory serves me correctly, one of the things I read was that boundary line has moved not only in part because of the mining operation lowering the grade, but there's also a ridge of ledge there that helps contain water flow, is that correct?
Yeah, and we, we usually don't have the quality of groundwater movement information that we have, so I think most of our watershed boundaries are based on topography, as this one was when it was adopted. But now we know, and this is the graphic from an investigation that came from the landfill and a number of monitoring wells measuring, using dyes or other indicators in groundwater to place them in one location and track where they show up in the other monitoring wells to determine their movements. What they found was there is a rim of ledge underground on the southern end of the lake that really helps control the level of Lake Auburn. Anything on the lake side of that ledge is potentially moving towards the lake. Anything on the southern or southeastern side of that ledge moves through the ground towards Grace Lawn and ends up coming either, either staying in the ground or coming out of the ground on the other side of Grace Lawn and draining down towards Pettingill Park. But that, that rim of ledge is really what defines the groundwater movements on that southern end of the lake, so that was a critical feature that protected the lake from the landfill that exists right next door to this.
So then how is that ledge then protected?
So it's below ground and there can't be any adjustment to, to that elevation of that ledge in that area or else that could physically change the, the watershed boundary. They're not into the ledge in that area. There's still, there's ground material above that and there's no intention to go that deep along that ledge rim. But that is something that we could reiterate to the property owner as a caution, that they, any development needs to maintain the internal draining nature of that pit and ensure that it, it doesn't drain towards the lake.
Who, how would you monitor the maintenance on that? I mean, just by telling them or?
Well, really by just ensuring that they're not getting into that ledge and blasting. They have a mining permit. We have a plan that shows the, the existing grades over time as they remove material and they have limits of what they're allowed to remove from the pit as part of that.
I guess to add a little bit to that conversation, you know, if the site was developed under storm management rules, under stormwater law and site law, there's a maintenance plan associated with any of the stormwater attributes that are built in the site and there needs to be a maintenance plan with that. So there is some maintenance of the existing stormwater controls that would be installed in the site specifically and it, and it needs to be maintained as part of their permitting and licensing requirements.
So maintenance kind of equals management too at the same time, is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Would there be ongoing studies for the future planned to ensure that all that information stays the same essentially?
I think that the best way is as we review individual developments, we have an approved mining plan at the state level and locally. We can monitor it through any changes proposed to that plan and compliance with that plan. But as developments are proposed, I think this board will have to, and staff, look at those plans and make sure that those proposals don't change that, that drainage pattern, so that it could move towards the lake. But the, the topography is such that those areas outside of the Lake Auburn watershed, there will not be mining that extends all the way to the lake. There's a separation requirement for the mining purposes, but there's also in most areas here, land ownership and some discussions with the watershed about, you know, the watershed protection commission owns a substantial part of that frontage. They may own more of it in the end as part of these, these development plans.
And to add a little bit more to that, oftentimes the planning board and/or sometimes staff and staff recommendations or staff review, we have internal staff that review the plans as well, we, we may request to the developer to have conditions of the approval and, and specifically we could identify some of these items that we have concerns about, so it could be a specific line item as a condition of the approval.
Cool, thank you.
And this, this graphic is from the Lake Auburn watershed study and that red circle is really just so you can identify where you're looking at each map in reference to the, to the other one.
Okay, I have a couple. Can you do me a favor and point out, so finding number two, you identified two small areas, can you just point those out for me please?
Yeah, so those, those two small areas are, one of them is here, there's a small piece beyond where the current topography could potentially drain to the lake from that high point back towards the lake. That is proposed to be adjusted over time or left as is undeveloped. And then there's this area up near Mount Auburn Avenue that the FB environmental Lake Auburn study identified that as a boundary of the current topography. It can, and there are plans in place, it can be mined and graded so that it drains internally, but it, it was not at the time of the FB environmental study.
Great, thank you. My second question is about the watershed overlay boundary, does that change dynamically? So if the watershed boundary changes, does the overlay change? Is it defined that way?
So I think that's, that's what we're trying to do here is to, we have new information and there's been changes made to the topography. We have new information and we now know that we have mapped a portion of the city as within the Lake Auburn watershed overlay zone. So I think the Lake Auburn watershed overlay zoning district, although it's supposed to match the physical boundaries of the watershed, the physical boundaries of the watershed are a natural feature where water moves in one direction versus, versus another. We now know that the water here does not go to the lake as we once thought it did, so this is really a correction of our zoning overlay map to match the, the physical drainage area of the, of the lake. So it doesn't automatically change because it is an adopted zoning map. The Lake Auburn watershed overlay only changes with a process that includes a recommendation from this board and then adoption by the city council. So eve, even as this pit has changed over time, so that it does not drain to Lake Auburn, it's physically not in the Lake Auburn watershed anymore, but the overlay takes a specific human action from the planning board and council to adjust the regulatory mechanism that is the, the zoning overlay.
Got it, so both the overlay and the zone need to be changed through action by planning board and city council?
Yeah, and by Lake Auburn overlay zone is what I'm referring to as the, the watershed zone.
Yeah.
Rather than the, the natural drainage boundary.
Yep, okay, great, thank you.
But we're asking for the second part as well, to change the general business zone to include this land that no longer drains to the lake.
Yep, understood. Are there any, do you know, are there any development plans or you still, they're still actively mining and so nothing is planned at the moment?
Yeah, they're, they are still actively mining it. There are portions of the pit that still have material that has value for local construction projects and road building and that kind of thing. They can intend to continue to remove material, but as areas are no longer useful for that purpose, then they will use some of the material onsite and whatever material to grade areas so that they're useful. There are development plans. The comprehensive plan calls for a mix of residential and commercial uses. We've talked with the property owner, he's interested in residential and potentially a mix of residential and commercial uses. We don't have a specific plan at this point, but I do expect that you'll see some development proposals within this area in the near future.
Do you have a percentage of that land mass that is still being mined versus what can't be mined anymore?
Um.
No worries if you don't, I was just curious.
Do we have the aerial in?
Yeah, yeah, there.
So this doesn't have kind of the circle for reference, but you can see the large disturbed area here where the mining operations are. This area up top was mined and then refilled with fill material over time, but it's, it's a majority of the area that we're talking about has been, has been mined in some way. If I can go back to the other one for the, for the.
Thanks.
So here's Grace Lawn. The existing boundary is this black dotted line, the proposed boundary is the, the blue, blue line. But a majority of it is, is actively mined or has been.
Any more questions for staff? Hearing none, I need a motion to open public comment.
So moved.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, all those in favor? At this time, I'd like to invite members of the public who wish to speak to the board on this topic to step forward. I'll remind you that you have three minutes to speak and when you do speak, please state your name and address. Thank you, and we'll start with this room first. I see some hands raised. If you want to order yourselves, you can step up to the podium one at a time and address the board.
Excuse me, I'm Stephen Beal. I own Bigwood Lot on the north end of the Johnson Road, which has 55 acres in the Lake Auburn watershed district. I think we're still missing some information regarding the location of the drainage patterns. Eric, could you run up again the page 20 of the October 2021 report, which shows on the right-hand side in that area of the ledge, that some part of that area, a significant part, is proposed to be moved into the development district from the watershed district, about approximately half of the area within the, within the oval. Looking at the hydrology map on the left-hand side, there are clear arrows showing some drainage going to the lake, some going in the direction of Grace Lawn Road and then across the road, but there are also some areas in the middle on both sides of the ellipse, one area here, one area here, which show gradual patterns that are more generally, although not so directly, in toward the lake. And there's no indication in the information which the public has been provided with, which indicates where that water ends up. If anything, it appears to go generally in the direction of the lake. And yet, if you look over on the other map, you'll see that that water flow appears to be on or slightly within the boundary of the area proposed to be moved. I, I think there needs to be some further detail done on that.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. My name's Spencer Dunn. I live at 530 Court Street in Auburn. I, I'm not too concerned with the watershed as is. I guess what I am concerned about is the zoning change into a commercial, a commercial development district under the new comprehensive plan. The understanding is that it's pretty exhausted for mining purposes and if it is to be put into a commercial development district, theoretically, there could be a lot of development that could be put into this large acreage right by our lake and more than likely, there's going to need to be brought in a lot of fill into this area, which would naturally end up changing how the topography, topography in this area is and what the drainage in this area would end up looking like. And so if we're going to bring in a bunch of fill and then whether it's, you know, an increased retail and commercial presence like we already have in our north Auburn retail district, I'm questioning whether this is the best spot in the area, right near a protected watershed, for us to be rezoning into a commercial development district for large-scale retail operations and high-density residential spaces. And given our new comprehensive plan's goals of creating new inroads into Auburn and into downtown, this seems like the last place. Auburn and into downtown, this seems like the last place that we would want to put a commercial development district if we're hoping to potentially open up an exit closer to inroads to downtown Auburn, where currently, under the comprehensive plan, it's only zoned for residential changes, for some upzoning. But there is no change to potentially accommodate a new commercial district in that region of the city that could later serve communities like Durham, Powell, Lisbon, and New Gloucester, as well as Southern Auburn, if there is to be an increased residential presence in that area. And so while I understand the appeal of having lakeside commercial development in our city, I think we have protected it for as long as we have in the city of Auburn in comparison to other communities in this state, and we should encourage, continue and encourage the protection of this area so that it can eventually potentially be developed for parks and recreation purposes rather than commercial development. That's all I really have to say.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mike Gatto. I'm with Stony Brook Consultant, Stony Brook Land Use. I'm here tonight representing JIG Aggregates Inc. from Alfred Lloyd Parkway in Lewiston. They own 108 acres of this area that you're proposing to rezone tonight. My history in representing development in the community goes back a long ways, but my history with this specific site started in the 1990s when a local construction company bought one of the pits. There were two pits that operated here. One was the Talbot Pit, and the other one was the Callahan Pit. And in 1999, I got permits for them to operate the Talbot Pit, and then they bought the Callahan Pit in 2001, and we got permits for them to do that operation as well. In 2004, we worked with a couple contractors to help the city change the gravel pit regulations so they could be compliant with the state rules and protect, the environmental rules necessary to protect Lake Auburn. There were several pit owners around the lake that we worked with, and we worked with city and the water district to do that. In 2004, after working on that ordinance, the owner at the time, K&amp;K, of both pits approached the city and the commission about doing some land swaps. We owned frontage on the lake with the idea of zoning up by Grace Lawn Road to allow some sort of development and to reclaim the pit, to do what we could do over the years. Those discussions went on until, without a lot of help, but we had a draft agreement, but it never got signed. Those discussions went on until 2006, when the K&amp;K was sold to George Schott, who had some success in development at the Auburn Mall, and he wanted to pursue this. So in 2006, on behalf of George, I hired some environmental engineering, environmental consultants to do a summary geotechnical report and hydrogeological report of this entire pit area. And it looked at the 1990 information that Eric and a couple of other studies. It installed a lot more monitoring wells over towards this way. And what we determined, what Eric said is correct, that for the most part, this 1990 study showing land going towards or flow towards the lake, it, it actually doesn't. It gets caught by the ledge. As you go over to the other end, the west end of where we're proposing rezon, specifically in this area here, what the study said is that groundwater comes from the lake, goes to the ravine between G and B and the cemetery. So there's actually a groundwater discharge from the lake through the pits to that ravine. And the groundwater contour maps that came with that information all proves that. So basically, what that study summarized is what they thought was happening, hit the ledge, came this way, went this way, comes over here, out of the lake, goes that way. So there's, without doubt, in 2007, when that study was done, we proved groundwater flow, surface water flow away from the lake.
Great, thank you very much. You've reached your three minutes, so.
I'm sorry.
Just a reminder, if you step away from the podium, could you, the microphone could zoom in and out of view of the camera?
Just a point of order, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If, if someone wants to go to the end of the line to get, to get back in line, can they do that?
Yes, they can.
Okay.
I'm Fred Haller. I live on 352 West Auburn Road. I don't know whether it's, if the Lake Auburn Water Commission or whoever, if they have involvement in this change of the water district, can the city council of Lewiston do that? I'm sorry, of Auburn. I get very nervous about any changes going on near our water supply, because if we mess up, we build ourselves a very expensive water processing plant, which all the taxpayers of Lewiston and Auburn will be involved in, not just the ones who get water from the lake. So I would be extremely cautious about changing anything, especially when there's still active mining going on in the area. And then you mentioned the area that would be taken from the water district and put in this commercial development area. That area gets the commercial development awfully close to the lake. I know all the water studies, but it's an active mining area. You can't count on what's going to be there after this mining is all finished. The other comment I would make there, that's prime land. That beautiful piece of ground up there, if you haven't been there, is you've got a beautiful view of Lake Auburn. Why put factories there? It probably ought to be zoned as rural residential. But I urge you not to take this lightly, because it could affect all of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Mary Ann Norcross, 47 Woodlawn Avenue in Auburn. I'm a lifelong resident of Auburn. And back in 1960, when I was in my senior year at Edward Little, one of my classmates' father happened to be the head of the Auburn Water District. And one of his paramount concerns was Lake Auburn, because it was our source of drinking water. I think that instilled in me the concern over the years, what are we doing or not doing with Lake Auburn? And I'm surprised that we haven't had anyone here from the Water District, but maybe they've had input, I hope they have, and, and they can share their input. Because for years, we've had neighbors and relatives and, and friends who have served either on the planning board or the Water District. And again, be careful of what you do with Lake Auburn is something I've always heard. Then in 1984, I became a Realtor. I served in the real estate community for 35 years. Lo and behold, what was the one thing we heard? If any properties or anything becomes available around Lake Auburn, please let the planning board, the Water District, whoever know, because we want to get them away from Lake Auburn. We don't want anything that can jeopardize our water supply, which supplies most of the communities, most of the residents, I'm saying, in Lewiston and Auburn. That was just something that was always instilled in me. Then along comes this quote word "development." And development is fine. I don't have a problem with development. But a commercial zone out there near the lake, and great big properties that are going to build beautiful homes, and I think that's wonderful, but how much development do we need, and do we need it near Lake Auburn? I guess that's my biggest concern, and I've conveyed this to other people. I just hope you'll stop and think, when you go home tonight and turn on your faucet, that that water comes from Lake Auburn, unless you're on a well. And if it does, are you willing to jeopardize it for the rest of us by going along with this? And please be sure you involve the Water District, because I have my fears that over time, that hasn't been a priority of theirs. Thank you.
Thank you.
My, my name's Ryan Smith. I live at 11 Harris Street in Auburn. I'm also probably someone you've almost hit with your car when I was out running, because I, I don't obey the signs very much. But being someone in recreation and someone who likes to run, I've noticed in this area that we really don't have a lot of paths and other areas. And I would just encourage everyone, as we're looking at this and rezoning, a lot of towns have paths around lakes, recreation area, and I think it's something that Auburn's really lacking is recreation area. And I'll say this coming from someone who actually works for a development corporation. I'm actually building two residential properties right now in Auburn, and I own some more land on top of that. I would encourage us to look at this as an opportunity to have some land for recreation and not just development purpose. Because although I'm, I'm a very pro-development person, it feels like we're playing with fire here with our water supply. And it, it makes someone, I'm, I'm someone that keeps bothering the city of how many units I can put on a piece of land, and can I put two or three or four units, and what can I do splitting this land to get more units, you know? I'm, I think that way. But I'm also looking at this going, yeah, I'm on city water, and it makes me pretty uncomfortable. But also, I think this is a great opportunity to develop some recreation area. So I would just encourage everyone that maybe we should look at this as an opportunity to have some land for that purpose, which is something I think we, we do lack as a city, and especially as we're growing and we're getting more people. I feel like if we can keep developing those areas while the, while the land's available into recreational areas, because at some point, we're going to run out of this land. And if we don't have the recreational area to support a growing population, it's not going to be a very good place to live in the long term. So Auburn's very attractive to a lot of people, coming up from, out of state and, you know, from Portland, and I realize we have, we don't have enough units to support our population, and we have so many jobs open. But as someone that is younger, in my twenties, and plans to live in Auburn for another 40 years, I would just hate to see all this land be developed and none of it be dedicated to recreational area, especially considering, you know, I, I don't really have a lot of safe places to run around the town as it is, which is actually very different than a lot of other towns in Maine. So I would just encourage everyone to keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think I stopped at the point where we did have an agreement with the commission signed in 2007, that we were going to work together to make a recreational activity occur here along with some development. And that agreement and the study we did was used to get CLH and Sun Expansion into the thing, because the groundwater's flowing away from the lake. So the bottom line is that since 2003, we've been trying to get this area rezoned, and I think all the groundwater studies show that it should be. We have permits in place where we can continue to mine this for many years to come, and it'll be a huge big hole that, for the most part, doesn't need to be reclaimed because it's a grandfather pit. Or you could change it and allow for mixed commercial use or residential. The mixed use ideas that we're talking about is what we've talked with the district, recreational activity trail around the lake, started this whole thing back in 2000, and doing development. Any development of this pit will be developed in the bottom of the pit, so the groundwater flow will always be going in the same direction. So again, there's a lot of studies that's been done. There's a lot of technical work that's been done, and we're ready to start designing, as Eric suggested, a project if this gets rezoned, so that we can start putting some residential uses along Grace Lawn Road and recreational uses along, with trails along the, the lake. So I'm here to, on behalf of the developer, to ask you to change the zoning.
Thank you.
Stephen Beal again. I just wanted to read a few of the policy recommendations that are a very integral part of this Lake Auburn watershed study that was just concluded in October. In addition to the factual issue that I presented before, the report contains an executive summary at the beginning, which is on unnumbered pages. But section five in column one of that report states, "The city of Auburn should not seek to ease the current resource protection zoning or consider rezoning portions of the watershed for increased density. Increased density and new opportunities for residential development are better suited to other areas of Auburn away from the Lake Auburn watershed." In the body of the report itself, toward the end on page 55, there's a highlighted box in which appear the words, "In summary, expanding development in the Lake Auburn watershed provides minimal net economic benefit across all affected stakeholders." And on page 59, finally, there is the highlighted statement, "We found no net environmental, economic, excuse me, environmental, economic or social benefit supporting expansion of development in the Lake Auburn watershed." So that is the, those are the concluding thoughts of the parties who conducted that Lake Auburn watershed study, only concluded three months ago. Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess I'm back up again. I guess I should also reiterate that this is this incredibly well-trafficked area of our city already, that already has quite a lot of retail presence in it, and a lot of that land is being underutilized as is, and essentially is essentially asphalt lots. And there are pressure points that undoubtedly the city could put on retailers and developers in that area to continue to further subdivide already existing lots in this development district, to increase the density, which is something our comprehensive plan really wants to do across all types of zoning, in already existing, in the already existing general business, and eventually, I would assume, commercial development district in this area. I'm not sure that plugging a bunch of units or whatever else into this area is going to add to the infrastructure and traffic problems that already exist in this area on a pretty much daily and hourly basis between, you know, 6:00 AM and 10:00 PM at night. It's just, it doesn't seem like this is the prime spot for us to be doing this, when there are a lot of other plots of land already in these kinds of districts that are not being developed and utilized as well as they could be. And yeah.
Thank you.
There's no one in the other room wishing to speak?
Nobody in the other room. Okay, is there anybody on Zoom?
Yes, stand by. There's one hand raised. Go ahead, Carol.
Hi, my name's Carol Lane. I live at 30 Arbania in Auburn. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. So, correct me if I'm mistaken, but the only reason I got this letter is because it also affects my neighborhood and 500 feet from my house. So am I correct to thinking that most of the people in Auburn have no idea about the plans for the lake from any notice that's come from the planning commission? Okay, well, that's my question.
So we've notified every property owner within 500 feet of an area that is being considered for a zoning amendment tonight.
Okay.
And we've advertised it in the newspaper and on our website.
Okay, so it would just be my concern, because I'm just echoing the other people that I agree with, because this is the only Lake Auburn water supply that we have. I think, you know, highly, having a public hearing, that everyone that is affected by the water supply, who drinks that water. So I'd like to hear the voices of many more neighbors. I am going to echo the concern about changing the watershed boundary, especially with some of the things that are listed for this development district, truck terminals and distribution uses, contractors, you know, if there was a truck full of oil that spilled, how are you going to tell that oil not to go over the ledge and get into the lake? It's just very concerning. You know, these are changes that, once they're done, they can't be undone. And I hope that they'll be considered very carefully with a lot of public input. I also want to echo the fact that, not just the fact that it could be recreational use, but the fact that it's being changed from not just agricultural, but protected, resource protection. I mean, there are other resources than just the water. There's trees, there's habitat, you know, the, and I hear a lot of talk about, you know, well, this is going to bring in taxes, all this development will bring in taxes. Well, the other thing that makes Auburn attractive and brings in taxes is people visiting the beautiful waterways that we have and Lake Auburn. And Lake Auburn is one of them, you know, it's not very accessible in that area. Why not make it more accessible? Bring in visitors instead of truck terminals and other such high-use businesses. That's just, it's alarming near our water supply.
Thank you. Anyone else on Zoom?
Yes, stand by.
Thank you.
Pam, go ahead.
Hello, I have to ditto what she just said. Right there at that area is a school, which will eventually be K through 12. There are baseball fields. And I have no problem with putting residential there and recreation, but it is not a...
I think we lost somebody.
One more comment. I don't know how I got lost. One more comment is that you can, you know, I understand that the, it's important to have good water to the city or to the cities, which they've had since 1900. But one thing that is also important is with or without a filtration system, the lake is important in and of itself. It isn't, they are two different issues. If we can keep the lake pristine, wonderful, then we may not have to put in a filtration system. But it's about the lake. It's about the lake.
Thank you. Anybody else want to comment?
I don't see any other hands raised.
Thank you very much. Seeing no one else approaching the podium, I would ask for a motion to close public comment.
So moved?
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll say it.
Thank you. All in favor? Okay, so I think at this point, we can have a discussion as a board about this issue. Since we've had numerous bits of public comment, I think we should do the best we can that any questions or items that people from the public were unsure about, we get clarification from staff. Does anybody want to run through a list of things that took notes? Riley?
A quick one. A recent point was brought up about the recommendations made in the watershed study and how we should not develop in the watershed. This map is updating the watershed. So this proposed change would not be in the watershed and developing there would not be opposing the recommendation from that report. Correct?
That's correct, and this is a direct result of another recommendation from that same report. It just was a separate page. But this is recognizing that the water doesn't drain to the lake here and we're adjusting the watershed boundary.
Thank you.
The exceptions being those too small.
Yes, yep. And if that was something that the board was overly concerned with, you know, it can drain internally based on the grading on the site. But it will eventually drain internally and then I guess we would have to come back if that was not included in the current proposal once it does drain internally.
When will the mining be done? I mean, if this went through, how?
I don't, I don't know exactly what the schedule would be, but I think there are portions of the site that are ready for development today or could be developed today. And then there would be other portions where the mining would continue for the longer term.
I know, I know you mentioned that you weren't really sure of any plans of being, what would be built. But, so you wouldn't have a percentage that would be, you know, residential or that would be general business?
Yeah, so the general business allows for a mix of residential and commercial uses. If there is a proposal for a development that includes three or more housing units or more than 5,000 square feet of new commercial building space, then those would come back to this board or could be reviewed as a subdivision over time. But we do, we do know that the property owner sees an opportunity for residential uses currently. We've also talked about, talked about commercial, but we just don't know exactly what would be proposed. But those would be, those proposals would be reviewed individually when there's a lot more information available.
To add a little bit to the conversation, you know, we talked a little bit about the boundary. As a staff person, you know, I could see where we want to draw a line on this map here to really delineate where the water is flowing. I think that's important. So this red circle here represents kind of exactly the same location as this. And this is the boundary, right? So we're looking, this is the boundary here. And these are, these are our flow directions, surface water and groundwater. So that line comes at an angle like this. So these areas that go this way, this way, and this way are not in the, are not in the watershed. We could do a better job at clarifying that. Certainly, if the planning board makes a favorable recommendation to the council to move this forward, we will clarify that though. And I think it's a good point, so.
And I would just add that we didn't draft this boundary. We had a very capable watershed modeler and watershed scientist as part of the FB Environmental Team, Laura Deemer. And they took all of the information that was available and came up with that boundary as their, their belief of where the water on the north side of that goes towards the lake. The water on the south side of it doesn't, with some margin for error to make sure they were, they were conservative on drawing that exact line.
Would it, do you know the location of the ledge as well? So if you were to, you know, if we do recommend this move forward to council, putting the blue line on the map with the contours would be nice. But if you could also sketch the ledge, that would be great if you actually knew where it was. I think that would clarify more things for people.
We could, we could show those on a single, single map overlaid on top of each other, sir.
Great, thank you. Any more things come up for people? I want to run through a few things here, but I want to let other...
I've got a few, if I may. One of the things I found interesting, and I'd have to, to say, one of the challenges I find with a format like this is the inability to answer questions as they come up. And I'm sure people who ask the questions have the same level of frustration. But I guess that's what we have to do in order to run an efficient meeting. So I'll try to capture some of those, some of them. One of those, which was new to me from Mr. Gatto, was the idea that any new development would be at the bottom of the pit. It wouldn't be backfilled per se, increasing the elevation and potentially changing the flow in any way. So I guess my first question is, A, did I understand that correctly? And would that make an impact if you were at the bottom of the pit? Would that be favorable for us to stay out of harm's way, if you will?
So that, that's a critical piece of it, right? So that they don't fill the pit to a point that changes the, the boundary so that the surface water could drain towards the lake. The pit in the proposals, sort of concepts that we've talked with the property owner about, it's critical that the, that pit remains lower so any water that falls within that area drains towards the, the inside and infiltrates into the ground. As part of that development, it does that now and it would have to continue to do that.
And that's something that's being monitored and enforced.
It, it is something that's very easily monitored based on the, any proposed site plans and what we can see for, for changes on the site over time.
Okay. Specifically, just to add a little bit to that, Brian, it's really, I think it's important that staff, when, if they get a set of plans, we're looking at pre-development conditions. So essentially what that means is a surveyor going out there and getting the data, getting the factual data of topo on the ground. So what are our existing contours now as it's, as it's presented, before it's developed? And then what are, what are the, the post-development elevation standards? I think that's very important that the developer explains that well. And it's also important that the planning board and staff understand that point well. So that should be covered in a pre- and post-development plan. And usually typically, it's addressed in the site plan or in, in the stormwater plan.
No, I appreciate that clarification because to your point, Brian, it's one thing, A, to monitor. That's completely fine. But if it goes against, you know, what we want, where's the regulation to be able to say, you know, you're, you're running afoul, right? So this is a regulation, this is where you need to stay. So you're saying there's firm regulations from a topical standpoint to be able to say they can and can't do? Is that what I'm hearing?
So we can, we can evaluate where the stormwater is running off. So if the post-design is showing that the elevations are higher than what is currently existing, as we drafted this, this plan, then we can make modifications to the site plan and to the developer and ask specific questions. So, or deny the permit approval. So those are, those are some of the things that staff would be looking at very closely.
And there, there's been a lot of revenues realized by selling all that material out of that pit over the years. And it really wouldn't be financially feasible to buy material to fill that pit to a level that would bring it back up to an externally draining.
Fair statement.
Great, so.
I would also note that we can, as was suggested earlier, put a finding to that effect in any recommendation we make. And if it comes before us, which we heard from Eric earlier is fairly likely, any project, we could actually make that a requirement of a project. Is that right?
Yes, and by virtue of having the watershed boundary, they cannot do something that will send stormwater back to Lake Auburn.
Right. Effectively change the watershed boundary, right?
Yep.
Mr. D, what, did you have more?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you.
A few, a few more, actually. Couple of folks seemed to mention concerned around communication, one being notification. I understand 500, or excuse me, residents within 500 feet receive notification. But this is obviously more than just the proximity to the lake because everyone's sharing, or people on public water are sharing this public water source. When it comes to matters like this, quite frankly, I think that was a great point. And is there, shouldn't there be a different mechanism for communicating this to the public when it involves everybody?
So we, it is a geographic location-specific proposal, but I get what you're saying, that it's also the water supply. We have communicated with the Auburn Water District, Lake Auburn Watershed Protection Commission, and Lewiston Water District is also aware. We did send notices to Lake Auburn Watershed Protection Commission, which is staffed by the other two organizations. We do, we did send through over 3,000 notices out related to the combination of all the zoning changes. But there, there is no requirement to send notices to everybody in the city for a map boundary change like this. We also advertise it through social media. We advertise it in the newspaper as required by, by law. But we do the extras like social media as well as posting to our website. And the Lake Auburn Watershed Protection Commission, which is staffed by combined membership of people from Lewiston, Auburn that have an interest in protecting the lake as the water supply. They're fully aware of it. Their most recent staff report, and that's, I was just opening that up here, references this proposal that is being talked about tonight at the planning board. And the staff comment on it was the zoning change would change the current zoning of ag resource protection to general business, Commercial Development District, and allow expanded residential density uses, retail, personal and business, professional services offices. Goes through the entire list of uses that are allowed in that district. Based on the proposed watershed boundary changes, the water and sewer utility services provided to these parcels and future development by the Auburn Water Sewer District at this time does not, this is the Lake Auburn Watershed Protection Commission staff, does not oppose the proposed changes to the watershed boundary or zoning as described in the planning board proposal, see attached. Future considerations that would raise concerns for staff and the watershed commission would be for any type of industrial use or discharge that may leave the facility business and cause contamination to Lake Auburn through direct or indirect discharge. This would be looked at as a case-by-case use of the properties. So as we receive development plans, that would be looked at individually and commented on through our plan review group that includes the Auburn Water District.
I appreciate you sharing that because I think that's a pretty important piece to hear feedback from the water district. So thank you for that. And to say this, there was some confusion around, I heard factories used, industrial used. But what we're talking about is not that type of use in this zone. Is that correct?
There, there are light industrial uses allowed, like indoor manufacturing, but in the general business zone in the Commercial Development District, but not heavy industrial uses like junkyards, factories with noxious emissions, that kind of thing. Those are not allowed in the, in the general business zone. So while light industrial, indoor manufacturing, assembly of parts, things like that is allowed, not heavy industrial uses.
So another question that came up is why commercial and not, one person said residential, one person referred to rural residential. Why is it we're proposing a commercial element to this?
The, the comp plan recommends that this district would allow for mixed-use buildings. So a mix of both residential and commercial. It most closely matches our existing general business zone. We'll eventually, very likely, combine that with the general business two zone because there's only a few differences in uses and standards. But that's what the comp plan recommends, is allowing for people to live, work, shop, and obtain services in the same areas rather than always separating those.
You mentioned there were plans with the redevelopment to have recreational-type elements to the, to the plans. Is that something the city can actually dictate with plans? That that would be required and for use outside of those that might be residing in that, in that development?
So there is, for traditional subdivisions, there is a recreation requirement. And that could be something that we push for to meet that recreation requirement. I do know that the current owner of the land and the previous, at least one, maybe two owners, have been actively engaged in discussions at times with the Auburn Water District and the Lake Auburn Watershed Protection Commission for how they can swap lands over time to benefit both parties and construct the Lake Auburn Southern Link Trail is the name of the planning document that the Watershed Commission has. That would be the, a trail that connects from the boat launch Route 4. We're building a segment of that as part of the Route 4 improvements from the boat launch north this summer. That project goes out to bid in sometime this month. But there is an, an active effort to make trail connections from the boat launch around the southern end of the lake, at least through this parcel. And then to work with property owners over time to see how that might continue. Hopefully someday all the way to Whitman Spring Road. It's certainly not ruled out. It's something that the property owner is aware of. And discussions have already happened about how to facilitate that. So I think this development potential of the front portion of these parcels and not allowing development by maintaining the Lake Auburn Watershed Boundary the way that it's proposed, not allowing new development on the lake helps support that, that happening in the longer term.
And I guess the last one that I have, Mr. Chair, is around, I'm not really sure how to phrase it because I'm not so sure I understood the, the context of the point. Repurpose current development. It was referred to lots of pavement in the area. Why aren't we using what's there now to...
Yeah, I think we've, we've done a lot to encourage that. I think most notably, the Planning Board and Council eliminated commercial parking standards last year. That is going to allow for parking lots to be repurposed for buildings in the existing mall area. What we find a lot of times is that, especially the big box and sort of repeat model stores that happen nationwide, they often want more parking than what we required anyways. I don't think we can force private property owners to go after a new tenant or build a new building, but our ordinance certainly encourages that now, and we are seeing some, some interest in additional pad sites on, you know, existing retail properties, restaurant properties, redevelopment of the site to host an Olive Garden, a slightly larger store. This is an effort to expand the area, but I don't think it takes away from the possibility of mixing in more uses in other areas.
That's it for me.
Great, thanks. Anyone else?
I've got one more item to add, Brian, to your comments. In particular with trails, not necessarily trails, but connectivity for pedestrian movement. It's been common that staff request additional sidewalks and things like that for connectivity. If there was a development here, we really wanted to kind of attach it to the rest of the community, too. We've had recent projects where they've had up to 1,000, 2,000, 1,200 feet of new sidewalk that is the requirement of the developer. So, you know, the planning board has the ability to request that in particular, in this particular case, and oftentimes staff kind of gives the developer the heads-up that that's the direction or condition of an approval.
Great, thank you.
I would add that we've worked with complete streets to do that in the past, in the recent past. Did we approve that development in between BJ's and GMB, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
With a requirement for them to build, I think, 700 or more feet of sidewalk.
Right.
So it is part of the review process, and I think if a developer is asking for an approval to develop this site, that's when you have a little more leverage to push for that, but it's, it's already a conversation that the developer is open to having and sees value in a Southern Link Trail, adding value to the homes or businesses that they would potentially develop here over time.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments from the board, discussion? We're getting to the point where we need to decide what we want to do. I guess we could, we can make a recommendation, we could table this.
It would be the most, if we were to choose to forward a favorable recommendation, I would be more for it if we excluded those two small sections that were not found, that were found to still be in the watershed from this 148-acre change.
Okay. What?
Discussion?
Yeah, do you want, can you tell us about those? Why, why they ended up being added?
So they, they were part of the recommendation that's existed since the 2010 comprehensive plan. We didn't remove them because we know that they can be drained internally, even if they're not currently. I guess one, one potential compromise on that could be if, if we were to adjust the watershed boundary, which it clearly excludes those, based on the boundaries that we have in front of us, but still allow for the commercial zoning, then they would either A, have to meet the phosphorus standard, or B, have to drain internally in order to get an approval from the planning board for any development in that area. Otherwise, you know, once they're graded in six months or a year or whenever that happens, I suspect they'll come back and ask for an amendment, especially that front piece. I don't think the rear piece is as critical, but that front piece is where we have road access, and I suspect they'll want to include that.
Okay. Are there anything else from the board?
I'm in favor of moving this forward.
Okay. Anyone else? Any other thoughts? If, at some point, we need a motion to move forward, so.
Can I capture this on three of three? Let's see. I propose, I move that the Lake Auburn Watershed overlay zoning boundary be adjusted as shown in the Lake Auburn Watershed Study and the attached map, and two, the general business boundary be adjusted to include most of the 148 acres shown on the map excluding the two parcels outside the watershed boundary.
Outside or within?
Within, I guess. Yeah, thank you.
I'd second that.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any debate of the motion? So I would like to make an amendment, propose an amendment to that, and that we include the findings and reasons listed with the exception of number two, because that, that is no longer applicable, and that we add another finding, which is that any development within this area needs to maintain drainage away from the lake. So I, do I have a, so the way this works is we have a motion that's been seconded, and I have proposed an amendment, which now needs to be seconded and voted on before we can get back to the original motion. So is there a second to that amendment?
I second that.
I have a second. Any debate over the amendment? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote on the amendment. All those in favor? Great, so the motion stands amended now to include the suggesting findings and reasons, findings and reasons with the exception of number two and adding one about maintaining drainage away from the lake. Any more discussion of this motion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? None? Passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, so that concludes item five of our meeting. Before we go to break, we need to have public comment. At this time, I invite any member of the public to address the board on any issue except for those that we've just discussed. Seeing no one, I'll make a motion to adjourn for 10 minutes, and we will just pick up, well, five minutes. We'll pick up again at 7:45.
Mr. Chair, we do have some hands raised on Zoom.
Oh, you do? Okay, great, thanks.
Sorry. I thought you were going to hear the motions there. Hold on a sec.
I'll withdraw my motion.
Pam Russo. Pam, go ahead.
When he said that I couldn't comment on anything you just did, that just, I couldn't take my hand down.
Okay.
I'm disappointed.
Any more, any more hand?
Yes. Are you going to be discussing the change to the Court Street City Core of Urban Residential, or is this the time that I speak on that?
We will be taking up Court Street in about 10 minutes' time.
All right, I'll hold comment until then. Thank you.
Thank you. So at this time, I will motion to adjourn until 7:45.
Second.
All those in favor?
Seven more?
The, um, this is, this is a recommendation again, as we've mentioned in the past for other zoning changes that we discussed tonight. This was something that was mentioned in the 2010 comprehensive plan and then again, most recently updated in 2021. And really the focus of this zoning change is we're looking at, you know, additional capacity in the city to provide housing in its, in essentially the city core. So we've identified this area as the city core. And, uh, most, you know, the important pieces to this is that, you know, we're really proposing development where there's existing public water, public sewer, roads, utilities, um, high-speed internet. Those are type, those are the types of things that we think that these are the, the best places for, um, for development in the city in terms of growing from the city core outward. Next slide. So just some, some talking points on the 4.2, um, the zone, the proposed zone district. I think first of all, I think we need to look at the fact that a lot of the city roads, um, in this area have, um, situations where they're essentially a legally non-conforming lot. So what does that mean? What does legally non-conforming lot mean? It, it means that the, the building more than likely was built prior to the existing urban residential zoning being established. So for example, currently right now today, uh, we go out, we would go out to a particular, uh, road like shared an avenue and we have a 25-foot setback. Many of those homes have, uh, front porches, like you can see, like the one, uh, here for sale. And if that front porch needed to be replaced, that'd be very difficult to do because it's a non-conforming lot. It would be hard to replace it. It would be difficult to get approved, uh, through our code enforcement folks because it doesn't meet the current setback requirements. So if we take the new standard, the new standard addresses this. It lessens the amount of frontage in the front from 20 feet down to, um, 15 feet. Um, and then, so that really takes, uh, um, addresses many legally non-conforming lots, which is, as we drove around, as Eric and I drove around, uh, I'm not really as familiar with Auburn, but, but we noted that there was probably 70% of the lots that are in this area, this 1,600 acres, has this type of, uh, condition. So we're really addressing a, a serious concern for, you know, uh, what we consider downtown revitalization or flipping homes, you know, making an older home nicer and reselling it and, and bringing it back into the community. It makes it a lot easier to do that. It allows for infill development. There's, there may be smaller lots that are adjacent to existing lots where, you know, housing, as we know, it's a big topic. We see it in the news often that, you know, how's, having housing available in Auburn is, is, uh, is really important. And this allows more homes to be built, you know, it's got smaller, uh, road frontage standards. Um, and it really, I think at the end state, it really provo- promotes housing affordability, right? So for that first home buyer to get into a small lot and, and to begin to put their small 1,200 square foot home, this, this is a possibility. This is an opportunity, right? You've got existing sewer, you've got existing water, um, and that all kind of just makes sense for, for the development. Then the other part of this is that, you know, a, a lot of the, um, downfalls from my, from a 10,000-foot view looking in to the community of Auburn, everybody's speeding on the roads, you know? Traffic's fast in Auburn. People are getting places. And we really need to really concentrate on promoting walkability and slowing that traffic down. And, and calming, you know, in a design, in an urban design, uh, way to do that, a calming situation is to build and bring the developments closer to the road. Squeeze that in. Everybody knows what happens when you're driving in a car and you got a box truck next to you and you got another one, you gotta squeeze in there. You slow down. Everybody slows down in their vehicle, right? Well, that slowing and that calming down makes it for a very much more, I think, inviting place to live. You know, it, it creates that sense of place, that charm, New England, you know, place that everybody wants to live. Um, so those, these are some of the things that I think that is a, uh, considerable benefit. There are, you know, I probably fielded, you know, of the 3,000, Eric mentioned the 3,000 or so, um, notifications that we sent. We probably got 2,000 of those or 2,200 of them are in this, in this district, in this urban residential area. And we had, we, as soon as people understood what, what the changes were and what the benefits were, most were in favor. I can say that there was some, some, um, a little bit of concern about, you know, changing the way things are today, you know? Those infill development lots, what happens if someone builds next to me? And really the outskirts closer, the closer you get, the further out you get to the suburban area, uh, there's more opportunity for housing and those are the folks that would, would potentially have, uh, more concern over that. But, you know, for the most part, um, these are, these are just some of the standards. The front setbacks, principal, uh, setbacks, five to 15 feet. Um, the lot coverage is 70%, usable open space 10%. This allows a lot of flexibility for development. And in particular, you can go up to three and a half, three stories in an attic space. So this really brings the densities up where we think, uh, as a collective group, as, you know, the folks that helped write the first comprehensive plan in 2010 and the ones that helped write it in, uh, 2020, 2021, and then the planning board's input and then ultimately the council's input. Um, this was really something that we, everybody kind of nodded their head on, yep, this is the place where we want development. We got a lot of pushback on the northern end of the, of the residential strips and, uh, we really kind of focused on this area as, as really good potential. Again, this is just an example on Western Avenue, that, that, uh, blue line, those are all non-conforming lots. Every one of them, they don't meet setback requirements. You want to make a change to your home, you want to do something, you want to make an improvement, create a breezeway. You know, I think breezeways are a big thing nowadays. We think about heat loss and things like that for homes. Breezeways are a great way to, to, um, really reduce the amount of, uh, energy that you use in your home. They can't build one here. They couldn't do it. There's a, if there's a door directly to the outside, they can't do it. They can't put a breezeway in. So, um, you know, it creates opportunity for individual landowners, uh, specifically financially for, you know, improvements that help energy efficiency, you know? We all see inflations going up, heating prices are going up, and this is a great way to address that. On the right side, um, is, those are available lots. It doesn't seem like a lot, but those are, those potentially could be buildable lots. It doesn't take a lot of, uh, road frontage and, um, you know, it lends opportunity. So we've had a case where, um, you know, families don't want, families don't want their family leaving, you know, the community. They don't, they have a hard time finding a place to build a home. And this is a great opportunity for, you know, for the land, uh, for the parent or whatever, or grandparent to provide a parcel of land in the inner city for the next generation. So, um, I, I, you know, I just kind of point that out, that there is opportunity out there. Um, on the right side, I know it's kind of hard to see, um, but just really quickly, I, I, I do want to go, uh, down through some of these, um, approved uses that at a staff level where it could be, it could be accepted. Um, single-family homes, duplexes, townhouses, multifamilies, uh, small bed and breakfasts, less than, less than four rooms, um, home occupations, community-based residential facilities, boarding houses and lodging houses. There's other, there's other uses that would be allowed, but it's gonna, it's gonna mean, uh, getting in front of the planning board to get them approved. So we're going to be reviewing things like parking, how does this affect traffic? Um, how does it affect stormwater? How does it affect your neighbor? How does the lighting being affected? Those are all the items that you guys would review in this process if it was approved. Um, so that's, that's pretty much it in a nutshell. And I guess I'll say that staff suggest, uh, the planning board, um, that we, we hold this public hearing and then staff recommends that the board forward a positive recommendation to the council supporting the proposed changes, that the proposed development be adjusted from urban residential to traditional neighborhood development district, uh, T-4.2. The total amendments include 1,687 acres shown on the map. And then again, the suggested findings and reasoning is the 2010 and now the 2020 comprehensive plan recommend expanding the form-based zoning in this area. It includes the area proposed on the map. This can be accomplished without creating a new district by using the existing traditional 4.2. The area is considered the core of the city and then the 2010 and now the 2020 or 21 support higher density with available infrastructure in place. I mentioned it before, sewer, water, power, high-speed internet, gas, that, there's natural gas available in most of these locations and existing roads. Um, the proposal can be implemented without detriment to city resources. I think that's an important piece. I think the city can handle this incremental development. It's not going to happen overnight. I think it's going to be very much incremental. If we look at what we've done in the last two years with form-based code, I don't think we've felt a lot of pressure from that zone change. I think this will be the same way. Um, and that's, that's pretty much it.
Thank you. Any questions for staff from the board? Yep, Mr. Bertrand.
Uh, in the, in the packet we got, one of the wordings, you said that the, uh, the minimum road frontage would be lessened, but the wording I have here says 16 units per acre with no minimum road, road frontage required.
I say that, but the, the mil- the minimum building requirement is 24 feet along the road front. So there is, essentially there is, there, there is some minimum requirement, but it's really referenced in the zoning requirements as 24 feet in terms of the building size itself. So in theory, yeah, you're correct, there is no minimum lot size requirement frontage, but there is building frontage requirement.
And then, and another question about the wording farther in the paragraph. It just, the, it says in general, the minimum front setback should be 15 feet max. That reads funny, that the minimum front setback should be a maximum of something.
Yeah, that's how the form-based code, that's how it's written. Um, so it's between five and 15 feet. We really want to bring new development closer to the road, um, and that's the reason, um, for that.
Okay. I just, I guess I was confused by why, so why wouldn't it say five to 15 feet instead of the minimum should be a 15 feet max?
Oh, that might be a typo.
Okay. Just reading, that was just my question.
I think that, that minimum, the, uh, 15 feet max, I think, is a cut and paste from the comprehensive plan. Um, the zoning district that we felt most closely matched out already had a five-foot minimum, 15-foot max, and it gives some flexibility.
Thank you.
You said that it wasn't going to happen overnight, but do you have like some kind of, you know, how many multifamilies you want to have in a certain timeframe or?
We, we haven't, we haven't, uh, you know, really figured out how many multifamilies we, is the target number. There is no particular target number. Um, but I think that each of these cases is that we, you know, we evaluate them on a case-by-case basis. Um, you know, so if it's three or more units, right, we're going to be, if they're proposing three or more units, then we, it, you get kicked into subdivision law, so we're going to be, they'll be coming back, uh, to planning board for that particular one. Um, but the essence of opportunity is there, um, and, you know, greater flexibility. And that's really, at this point, that's all I would really be comfortable saying.
I think one of, one of the questions that came up too is, uh, one in particular was from an existing condo development. Uh, we really don't anticipate-
Coming down makes it for a very much more, I think, inviting place to live. You know, it creates that sense of place, that charm, New England, you know, place that everybody wants to live. Um, so these are some of the things that I think that is a considerable benefit. There, you know, I probably fielded, you know, of the 3,000, Eric mentioned the 3,000 or so, um, notifications that we sent, we probably got 2,000 of those or 2,200 of them are in this, in this district, in this urban residential area. And we had, we, as soon as people understood what, what the changes were and what the benefits were, most were in favor. I can say that there was some, some, um, a little bit of concern about, you know, changing the way things are today, you know? Those infill development lots, what happens if someone builds next to me? And really the outskirts, closer, the closer you get, the further out you get to the suburban area, uh, there's more opportunity for housing. And those are the folks that would, would potentially have, uh, more concern over that. But, you know, for the most part, um, these are, these are just some of the standards, the front setbacks, principal setbacks, five to 15 feet. The lot coverage is 70%, usable open space, 10%. This allows a lot of flexibility for development. And in particular, you can go up to three and a half, three stories in an attic space. So this really brings the densities up, uh, where we think, uh, as a collective group, as, you know, the folks that helped write the first comprehensive plan in 2010 and the ones that helped write it in, uh, 2020, 2021, and then the planning board's input, and then ultimately the council's input. Um, this was really something that we, everybody kind of nodded their head on, yep, this is the place where we want development. We got a lot of pushback on the northern end of the, of the residential strips. And, uh, we really kind of focused on this area as, as really good potential. Again, this is just an example on Western Avenue, that, that, uh, blue line, those are all non-conforming lots. Every one of them, they don't meet setback requirements. You want to make a change to your home, you want to do something, you want to make an improvement, create a breezeway. You know, I think breezeways are a big thing nowadays. We think about heat loss and things like that for homes. Breezeways are a great way to, to, uh, really reduce the amount of, uh, energy that you use in your home. They can't build one here. They couldn't do it. There's a, if there's a door directly to the outside, they can't do it. They can't put a breezeway in. So, um, you know, it creates opportunity for individual landowners, specifically financially for, you know, improvements that help energy efficiency. You know, we all see inflations going up, heating prices are going up, and this is a great way to address that. On the right side, um, is, those are available lots. It doesn't seem like a lot, but those are, those potentially could be buildable lots. It doesn't take a lot of, uh, road frontage. And, um, you know, it lends opportunity. So we've had a case where, um, you know, families don't want, families don't want their family leaving, you know, the community. They don't, they have a hard time finding a place to build a home. And this is a great opportunity for, you know, for the land, uh, for the parent or whatever, or grandparent to provide a parcel of land in the inner city for the next generation. So, um, I, I, I just kind of point that out, that there is opportunity out there. Um, on the right side, I know it's kind of hard to see, um, but just really quickly, I, I, I do want to go, uh, down through some of these, um, approved uses that at a staff level where it could be, it could be accepted. Um, single-family homes, duplexes, townhouses, multifamilies, uh, small bed and breakfasts, less than, less than four rooms, um, home occupations, community-based residential facilities, boarding houses and lodging houses. There's other, there's other uses that would be allowed, but it's gonna, it's gonna mean, uh, getting in front of the planning board to get them approved. So we're going to be reviewing things like parking, how does this affect traffic? Um, how does it affect stormwater? How does it affect your neighbor? How does the lighting being affected? Those are all the items that you guys would review in this process if it was approved. Um, so that's, that's pretty much it in a nutshell. And I guess I'll say that staff suggests, uh, the planning board, um, that we, we hold this public hearing and then staff recommends that the board forward a positive recommendation to the council supporting the proposed changes, that the proposed development be adjusted from urban residential to traditional neighborhood development district, uh, T dash 4.2. The total amendments include 1,687 acres shown on the map. And then again, the suggested findings and reasoning is the 2010 and now the 2020 comprehensive plan recommend expanding the form-based zoning. In this area, it includes the area proposed on the map. This can be accomplished without creating a new district by using the existing traditional 4.2. The area is considered the core of the city and then the 2010 and now the 2020 or 21 support higher density with available infrastructure in place. I mentioned it before, sewer, water, power, high-speed internet, gas, that, there's natural gas available in most of these locations and existing roads. Um, the proposal can be implemented without detriment to city resources. I think that's an important piece. I think the city can handle this incremental development. It's not going to happen overnight. I think it's going to be very much incremental. If we look at what we've done in the last two years with form-based code, I don't think we've felt a lot of pressure from that zone change. I think this will be the same way. Um, and that's, that's pretty much it.
Thank you. Any questions for staff from the board? Yep, Mr. Bertrand.
Uh, in the, in the packet we got, one of the wordings, you said that the, uh, the minimum road frontage would be lessened, but the wording I have here says 16 units per acre with no minimum road, road frontage required.
I say that, but the, the mil, the minimum building requirement is 24 feet along the road front. So there is, essentially, there is, there, there is some minimum requirement, but it's really referenced in the zoning requirements as 24 feet in terms of the building size itself. So in theory, yeah, you're correct, there is no minimum lot size requirement frontage, but there is building frontage requirement.
And another question about the wording farther in the paragraph. It just, the, it says in general, the minimum front setback should be 15 feet max. That reads funny, that the minimum front setback should be a maximum of something.
Yeah, that's how the form-based code, that's how it's written. Um, so it's between five and 15 feet. We really want to bring new development closer to the road, um, and that's the reason, um, for that.
Okay. I guess, I guess I was confused by why, so why wouldn't it say five to 15 feet instead of the minimum should be a 15 feet max?
Oh, that might be a typo.
Okay. Just reading, that was just my question.
I think that, that minimum, the 15 feet max, I think, is a cut and paste from the comprehensive plan. Um, the zoning district that we felt most closely matched out already had a five-foot minimum, 15-foot max, and it gives some flexibility.
Thank you.
You said that it wasn't going to happen overnight, but do you have like some kind of, you know, how many multifamilies you want to have in a certain timeframe or?
We, we haven't, we haven't, uh, you know, really figured out how many multifamilies we, is the target number. There is no particular target number. Um, but I think that each of these cases is that we, you know, we evaluate them on a case-by-case basis. Um, you know, so if it's three or more units, right, we're going to be, if they're proposing three or more units, then we, it, you get kicked into subdivision law, so we're going to be, they'll be coming back, uh, to planning board for that particular one. But the essence of opportunity is there, um, and, you know, greater flexibility. And that's really, at this point, that's all I would really be comfortable saying.
I think one of, one of the questions that came up too is, uh, one in particular was from an existing condo development. Uh, we really don't anticipate some of those pre-approved subdivisions really seeing much for change. Uh, one, a condo development that has a really specific approved plan would have to come back to the board for any substantive changes, change, but a lot of the subdivisions that we've seen over the last 20 or 30 years under the zoning that we've had in place with 25-foot setbacks, a lot of those developments sort of on the outskirts of this area, have specific covenants that limit the number of units that are allowed to be built on those lots. This does not change any of those. We don't have the ability to impact those. Um, if a developer imposed covenants that said you can only build single-family homes in this development, then, the zoning may be more permissive, but the land itself in that development doesn't allow for more than a single unit.
So it doesn't seem like you actually want to, you know, it, you don't want to change the zoning necessarily for building. You just want to maybe change the zoning for, to have it, have people who own houses to be able to fix them or to add things to them? Or, I mean, more than a building process? Like more like helping people or helping, like having homeowners fix their decks and fix their porches? I mean, it doesn't seem like you have like a huge building process that you want to do. It just seems more like conforming.
There is, there is some available land to be, to be developed in this, in this, uh, proposed zoning district. There is some vacant land. Um, so in those areas, we would, you know, we would welcome the idea of a new, a new housing development or a new, um, apartment complex or something like that. But yes, there's opportunity to correct issues in existing homes, uh, that would benefit a lot of the residents within the city. So in that regard, that, that's, it's a, it's a good takeaway. But the other part of that is that the vacant land that's available does, has easy access to water, sewer, roads, um, and a lot of the public utility that makes it, um, it makes a lot of sense for development to occur there.
So a quick question out of curiosity. So you said that development, that land that could be developed, you have like a percentage around that? And the only reason why I ask you that is because you had said 70% of those homes are non-conforming lots. That's a fair amount of, of non-conforming lots in that area. What's the converse to that? What's the percentage for development? I'm just curious. Land that could be developed in that area.
I don't have a, a percentage, uh, specifically on that, but, you know, I would say of the 1,600 acres, there, there may be 30% that's available for, for development. But there's all kinds of conditions that, you know, we didn't, we didn't do an analysis on, like existing wetlands and is there, uh, available sewer and water, um, you know, accessibility site distance. There's just the whole criteria of a site design that has to be taken in consideration from each site. But the land available right now probably would be somewhere around 30%, I would guess. And it's in the most, most of it is in the outskirts of that urban residential area. Um, but there is some, uh, core, uh, in-town lots or infill lots where there's, there's capacity there. But there has to be a need and a want for an individual landowner to do something specific on their lot.
Okay.
Uh, could you comment, uh, 16 units per acre? Uh, is there a minimum size lot to go with that?
There is necess, there isn't necessarily a, a minimum size lot. Um, there is a minimum, uh, you know, building width. And I, I misspoke, I don't know, it's, the minimum building width is 14 feet and the maximum is, is 110. So really that's, that's kind of your lot configuration, but you've got to, the other thing is we got to figure out parking, right? So parking is taken into consideration of that. So those are some of your controls. And then depending on the size of the development, you've got to have stormwater controls. So it's, uh, form-based code really kind of, you're, you're kind of, um, the way that it really works is what's available and it kind of morphs into the lot that's available. And how do you make it work? So you take all the, you know, the building considerations, the size, the number of units, the required parking, you know, you need one space for every dwelling unit. And then beyond four, you got to add another parking space. So that takes a certain amount. And you got to have circulation space, so that kind of goes in, into your design. So that's all like adding up to what your size requirement is for a specific lot, depending on what you want to do. You could do, uh, you could do a small, uh, residential home that would require one, one parking spot and, you know, get it on a very small footprint. Um, and, you know, less than a tenth of an acre. So, you know, you could get really, really, uh, creative. You might be able to get a two-unit if you, if you stack them up on top of one another. So it really takes some creativity, some working with the planning staff, and depending on the size, working with the planning board, to really define what the lot size is and what, what the minimum lot size is.
I, I think that's one of the biggest differences between the traditional zoning that we've had that says you need 10,000 square feet for one unit, you need 12,000 square feet for two units. This sets the parameters, um, the lot width, the building width, the number of stories. It sets the parameters for the form or character that needs to happen for the development and then lets you be a little bit more creative within those parameters to fit the number of units that, you know, if you're doing three-bedroom units, you might not fit as many units into the box that you've constructed as if you do one-bedroom units. But what happens inside the building that meets those form standards is, is less of a concern in a form-based code district than traditional zoning.
So, um, any other questions from the board? Yep, Bertrand.
I had one more about the, um, so currently reading the zoning for urban residential, it says four units per acre for a single family and six units per acre for a two-family. The 16, or 16 units per acre is not, uh, regardless, so that'll all be single family or does it matter? Uh, because it's, it was specified in the urban residential, it was, single family was four, two-family was six.
No, it's not, it's not spe, specified to just single family. It could be, could be a multifamily. So again, the, when you start factoring in parking, open space requirements, um, things like that, um, your, 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 your lot gets bigger and you're going to require, you know, more land. So, so just, it's, it's a rule of thumb, 16 units per acre. Um, we've, we've had developments, uh, Grace Lawn, I think is 16 units per acre. We use that as an example in the comprehensive plan when we, when we discuss these items. You know, as you think about, uh, sets of apartment complexes and associated parking and associated stormwater controls and, um, you know, traffic movement throughout that location, you, you kind of get the, um, the requirements of the lot size and the number of units in a specific area.
And when, when you get to three or more units and the, the development comes before the planning board, one of the findings you have to make is that it's consistent with the comp plan. So that's, I think you could apply that 16 units in that way to the, to the larger projects.
I had one more question about the, the small section of the change that's coming from the multifamily suburban to this form base. They currently are zoned, they could have a 17 unit if it's multifamily. So that's going to be a reduction. Is there any body that's being made to be out of code by this change? Is there any 17-unit places in the multifamily that would now be out of code?
Uh, we haven't looked at that. I haven't, I haven't looked at that. Um, but that's certainly something that we could, we could take a look at and, you know, identify some of those lots. So there is that, you know, that, I think that brings up a good point, Riley, is that, um, there's, we talk about the 70% of the existing, right, in urban residential, but there's the 30% that were built to the new standard, right? So those now become, or potentially could become, non-conforming because they're set back. So that's, you know, that, that's part of the, um, you know, give and take, uh, per se, and the, and the advancement of the densities in this urban area. But I think it, again, the big picture is it lends, uh, more opportunity for, for housing and that's, and this is the area that we identified it as.
Any other questions for staff?
Yes, can you speak to the, um, commercial opportunities? Uh, you mentioned it in kind of a list form, uh, but there's, um, an element to that community feel. Um, we once talked, uh, in a workshop or whatever forum it was about, uh, sort of reintroducing the neighborhood corner store, if you will. Uh, can you speak to that?
Yeah, it, it certainly lends the opportunity for the, uh, neighborhood, um, store to come back. Um, and that would be a, um, you know, that, that's general retail. Um, any, any development like that specifically though would have to come before the planning board. That's a special exception, um, but it is, it would, it could be allowed, but would require a planning board approval.
And, um, would the right plan encourage by staff? I mean, is that part of the, the big picture? Is to, to get the, the walkability features of going to the corner store?
Yes, I, I think that that would be, um, a welcome addition to the, to any neighborhood is to have a small, you know, uh, mom and pop store or something like that where you could, you know, you and the kids could walk down to the local store and, and get, you know, some conveniences without having to drive anywhere.
And that, that was a very intentional, multiple very intentional conversations of the comprehensive plan committee that not only offer the opportunity for somebody with a home in that neighborhood to maybe have a, a small business venture that could grow into something larger or maybe could remain small um, and, and serve the neighborhood. But also we've lost most of our neighborhood stores, the small pizza markets or, um, convenience stores like Heathco's. We don't have a lot of those anymore. The city tried to preserve those through the neighborhood business zone, um, that existed, but there was a, there was a clear desire of the comp plan committee that a small coffee shop, a retail shop, a personal service within walking distance of these core residential neighborhoods at the core of the city was, was desirable. So, and the same is to deliver, deliver that.
And I guess just to add a little bit about this, if you, if you zoned in on the zoning map, I don't know if you can bring it up live, Eric, but if you zone in on the urban residential zoning map, there's a situation where there is a small store and we have spot zoning. That's something that's for that specific, um, you know, use. And I think that, that spot zoning was to just really address that one little convenience store that's in, that's in the downtown. Yeah, just to the south there.
There's one here.
Yeah, right there. See that little spot zoning? Uh, you know, from a planning perspective, doing spot zoning like that, that's, that's not, I wouldn't consider that good planning, but that certainly probably addresses one of those little stores that we're talking about. And this zoning change, again, would correct that issue.
There's a pizza market, that example, and then Gauwels is another example of that existing within the city.
So there is, um, there's one question that was in one of the letters that I just thought I would ask, um, because it was sent to us. So with all this development that's coming up, who can talk about, um, building standards and building code? I assume it's not the planning board. Um, is that something the city's looking at?
Yeah, so through the building permit process, um, the cities used to have the ability to adopt their own building, um, and energy codes. The state of Maine has adopted what's called the Maine Uniform Building and Energy Code and mandated that any community over 4,000 people has a code officer that reviews permits for compliance with those. Um, so we have those standards in place. We don't have the ability to, under building plumbing and electrical codes. We don't have the ability to sway from those. Uh, we can't, in a lot of cases, we can be more stringent with regulations. Through the Maine Uniform Building and Energy Code, the goal was to have a uniform standard statewide and we just, we don't have the ability locally to differ from that. Um, but we do have the staff in place, um, to review permits for compliance with those things.
Great, thank you. Any further questions for staff? Hearing none, I think it's time to hear from the public. Do I have a motion to open public comment?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
One in favor. Okay, before I invite you up, um, remember that as you come up, you can speak at the podium and you'll have three minutes. I'll put the timer on. And if you start with your name and address, that would be appreciated. We will do the people in person. We'll hear from people in person first. Then if there's someone on Zoom who wants to speak, they should raise their hand and we will call on them in the order in which they have raised their hands. So, anyone who wishes to speak should come to the podium, yes.
Okay, just a quick question. My name's Mark Chassie from Auburn. Uh, how do you determine your need for housing? What's, what's your formula for, for doing that for the community of Auburn?
My name is Elizabeth Dunn. I live at 530 Court Street. Um, my first two major points coming in before I heard anything else tonight was about traffic on Court Street and how it is already very, um, complicated, lots of volume and lots of speed. So the idea of bringing in more dense population in that area, knowing that a big parcel of land has already been sold across the street is concerning to me. So I'm very much interested in hearing what the priorities are for traffic, um, in a very busy area. Um, Court Street, as you know, has, um, schoolchildren traveling on, in two different directions to the high school and the middle school. And that's a safety concern for me and has been for a very long time. Um, my other concern with the population, population density increase that is being talked about this evening is how it's going to affect education and, um, where we're going to put all the children of the families coming in to fill these homes that you're talking about. We're building a brand-new high school at a considerable expense to taxpayers. And it sounds to me like that building is going to be outgrown before that we even move in. I know there is some room for expansion, as I said in on many hearings, for the development of the new school, but there's only one wing available to expand that building. So I'm concerned about education. I'm concerned about traffic. I'm concerned about the small-town feel in our city when you start increasing the population in what you are calling the core of our city. We have some walkability. It's just dangerous walkability up and down Court Street and Goth Hill. Um, there are definitely some concerns there for safety, which I would like to see addressed. And we've talked about it numerous times, but we see very little presence of safety or police in our area, um, monitoring the traffic. So that would be some big concerns. I do have concerns about a staffer though, giving us all these suggestions, saying at the beginning that he's not familiar with our city. So how do we change our city based on the recommendations of people that aren't from here? My family has been here in my own personal use for over 30 years, but my husband's land that we own on Court Street has been here for 231 years. Our family has been here. It was agricultural, it was farming, it was small-town. We are here for that reason, and I'm sure that there are many others in our city who feel the same. Please take these considerations before you blanketly pass these zoning changes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, uh, my name's Dan LeBree. I live at 326 Lake Street. And just a perspective from a, uh, single-family resident out there on Lake Street. Uh, we purchased our house six years ago. And up until recently, my wife and I, we'd been looking to move out, uh, of Auburn just because we needed more room. Uh, we have two small children, uh, one is disabled, um, that will likely be living with us, um, her whole life. So the, the need for a larger space, um, and with the current 15-foot setback, um, I wouldn't be able to build a, in addition to our house. But if it went to five feet, we would be able to build, um, a sizable addition that would allow- a sizable addition that would allow that additional space for not only my daughter and my wife to, to grow our house, but also both of our parents are getting to the age that they may need to live with us. So the changing that setback would be a positive impact for my family out on Lake Street. And I think without it would be, you know, we'd still be continuing to look at maybe moving outside of Auburn, unfortunately, so hopefully that goes through.
Thank you.
Yeah, my name's Ryan Smith. I live at 11 Hare Street. I just had a comment on this map. With this new change for the, I believe it's traditional neighborhood going to 16 units per acre and reducing the setbacks, I feel like there are some more areas to the south here that would also benefit from the same zoning change. So going down towards some of these suburban residential areas, Pride, Pride Road, down to, you know, the west side of like Poland, what is it, Poland Road, and there's neighborhoods in there that have some of these same issues in terms of not having the setbacks and conforming. I think when you keep heading south on Hotel Road, there are a couple of roads there to the east that kind of, on the other side is Poland Road, that could definitely benefit from the same sort of zoning change. And even as you get into, you know, Glendale, Pride, I feel like, you know, they could also benefit because those, those homes in there are very packed in there against the setbacks. And then same as more, more south from there, yeah, that neighborhood and then also going down even more on Hotel. So that was just my comment towards this. I feel like if we're changing it for those reasons, you know, this neighborhood right here, yeah, right in there could also benefit from that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's John Cleveland. I live at 183 Davis Avenue. I've lived in Auburn. Now, most of all, my adult life and I was raised here and graduated from school here, so I'm familiar with the community. I think it's a good idea to take a look at infill lots, land that's not being utilized that might make a nice location for another home. We do need some places for people to grow and to have places to live. However, as I take a look at this proposal of nearly 1,700 acres, a huge massive area or an already historically developed area. When I walk around the Lake Street neighborhood, I could count on little more than one hand, the number of vacant lots in that whole area. They don't exist there unless you're going to tear buildings down to put some houses out. In more external areas you have on your map, yeah, there's some undeveloped areas out there, but not in those neighborhoods. They're traditional neighborhoods, mostly single-family, a number of two-family dwellings in that neighborhood that's been traditional for years and years, decades that it's been, I know you haven't known much about Auburn, but some of us do. And it's been a traditional neighborhood area to grow. Changing right now, you have an allowable eight units per acre. This proposal would allow up to 16 units per acre. That's 2,700 square feet per acre for a house. That's very dense and you can cram more in if you go higher because you can get more units and you have a smaller footprint. So you could go from an area that's been traditionally single-family, double-family, in-law neighborhood, to having multiple large tenement buildings within the neighborhood, particularly if they buy a lot and tear the building down to put a larger unit in it for them. I don't see the community growing that fast. I don't know why we're going it using a chainsaw to try to solve problems when we could do it a little more precisely, a little more sharper focus on what we want to accomplish here. I also want to note that although we need additional housing, to suggest that the real issue is that it's the lot that's the cost that's a barrier, it's not correct. A typical small two-bedroom ranch house today costs a quarter of a million to $300,000 just to build a house, not counting the lot or the site development. What's driving the cost is not the lot size, it's the construction that's doing it. And the second thing that's bothering people is many people in this community don't make enough money to afford a mortgage or even a rent sometimes. So the barrier to them isn't building more housing on smaller lots. It's really the barrier for them is the ability to afford to live, live there. The other point that I want to make is-
So, excuse me, sir, your three minutes have, have gone up.
I'll make just one more point and that'll be it.
At the end, once everybody else has had their chance, you can return to the podium. Thanks.
Thank you.
Spencer Dunn, 530 Court Street. It is my understanding that our current existing urban residential is four, four units per acre if it's single-family and six units per acre if it's multifamily. And then existing suburban currently in Auburn's zoning is two units per acre. Under the comprehensive plan, there would be a shift of suburban turning to eight units per acre and this traditional neighborhood becoming 16 units per acre. I guess the missing point for me is not understanding why current urban residential couldn't just be zoned to the comprehensive plan's updated suburban residential while still gaining net two units per acre for, under this comprehensive plan. That's still allowing for increased density on smaller lots while not necessarily completely changing the character of a large plot of land and acreage that is already currently developed and relatively filled neighborhoods in the city of Auburn. I, the current claim seems to be that the setbacks are hindering the ability for existing landowners to make alterations to their properties that I would think were undoubtedly grandfathered in to zoning changes whenever they happened decades ago. It's also my understanding that the city is able to change the language of their zoning when they're updating it to allow for setbacks to change without having to massively change the amount of units that are existing on a given acre. There's no reason our existing urban residential district with hindering setbacks on all sides of a property cannot turn into suburban residential under the comprehensive plan while still gaining units that doesn't have those setbacks and still not sandwiching a bunch of multifamily, potentially from a developer's perspective, a bunch of multifamily units onto increasingly smaller lots in what are primarily single-family homeowner neighborhoods. And I guess to further address, traffic in all of these neighborhoods is already a huge issue and the roads historically in the past decade, while I've been growing up, walking to EL and having to walk to AMS, the roads were widened and the sidewalks got closer to the road. There wasn't any sort of grass strip in between. And I'm also a runner and I run all over the city of Auburn and have to experience these kinds of lack of safety standards while people are going 45, 50 or north of in 25 and 35 mile per hour regions.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Nancy Green. I live at 134 Granite Street in Auburn. As you may know, the Lake Street area, can't read what I'm writing. The Lake Street area with its minimum size lots that are often compressed to one another. It also has homes that share driveways. It has small apartment buildings and it has few green public areas. It is, from my point of view, and I think it would be, would be, I think others would, would agree, it's one of the densest areas in Auburn. But even so, this neighborhood has been family-friendly for generations. And it, and it includes incredible people, people of different economic means, different, different and diverse ethnicities and diverse occupations. We have maintained our homes with diligence. It is the kind of neighborhood that people treasure as it is. One of the staff members talked about a place, a place charmed New England town. I think you could actually give the Lake Street area a description of that sort. We do have, anyway. And some of the homes in the Lake Street area are still, or can still be affordable. I have several questions. One is, can you explain why this dense area in Auburn has been chosen for the focus of multifamily units? The second is, in making this plan, have you, I know you don't want to get outside of the, of the water and sewage and, and those kinds of things that are needed, but have you considered the cost of upgrading the streets? The streets in our area are narrow. They are very, very, they are very, they need significant upgrades. And when you bring in more people and more multi-units, it's going to cause more problems. People have already talked about that on Court Street as well. Water and sewage is another issue. Schools are another issue that are going to cost this city a lot of money and basically will end up costing the taxpayers a lot of money. So Auburn may need more housing. I just don't think it should be in the densest areas or the most trafficked areas. There were several things I, from the discussion, just one. The first thing I have to say is when I talked to somebody today, they said that you might be making the decision today. And I am urging you to give it another public hearing. There are very, there are people here that are concerned. My understanding, it was supposed to go to a public hearing with the planning board in March and it's a lousy night out there. We all know that. There are people who may not be on computer, may not be on Zoom, who need to be able to talk. And I would like you to at least consider not making a decision today. Having another public hearing and then go to the council.
Thank you very much. Your three minutes have elapsed.
Good evening. I'm Sharon Philbrick Bergeron, resident at 23 Dexter Avenue since 1987. Prior to that, resident of 19 Dexter Avenue from 1960 to 1975. Very familiar with the area we're talking about. And I feel great about the housekeeping items. My house was built in 1889. So the non-conforming stuff, kudos to you. Thank you. But this is the first time, to Nancy's point, this is the first time that I've been directly contacted about major changes to my neighborhood. I know you folks have dedicated a lot of time in updating the comp plan. Thank you. And this all makes sense to you, but please consider an affected person's recommendations. First, please reject the 400% increase in the number of units from four to 16. Wow, 16 units per acre. When you said there were 16 acres, 1,600 acres at 16 units, that's 25,600 units. How many units do we have there now, I wonder? I'm not going to take my three minutes with you. Thank you. That's a good question, I think. Currently, we're zoned to protect medium-density urban residentials for one to two family detached dwellings, designed to ensure a family living environment in an urban setting that provides yard space for family outdoor activity and play space for children. That's currently. But at 16 units per acre, why? Why not eight units per acre? Can you recommend a 200% increase instead of a four, a radical 400% increase this evening? Second, please recommend the T41, I don't know if you can pull that up, and not the T42 proposed uses for this zone. This would reject the total commercialization, this would reject the, this would mean the total commercialization of our neighborhood. The 42, T42 zoning change actually only prohibits hotels, government offices and transportation facilities. Everything else is either permitted or, as mentioned, come on in for a special exception. We are talking about restaurants, retail, specialty shops, drug, medical, rehab, lodging. That's not a neighborhood. That's downtown. Our, our neighborhood is affordable for young families to raise their children and for older folks that can afford those property taxes. It's a great place to live currently. And so I request that you make a recommendation that reduces the units per acre and utilizes the T41 allowed uses instead of the T42. Thank you.
My name is Judy Tyler. I live at 200 Davis. I've lived in that neighborhood for somewhere around 40 years. I have a number of things that I'd like to address based on what little I've been able to learn since I received that letter, which was my first awareness of all of this. I'd like to ask some more questions tonight so that I could make more comments. There's still so much to learn, but I'll try to address the things that I've been able to find out thus far. I'm concerned about our timing and not having enough time, especially those of us that just received the letter, and other issues. It has been during COVID, last summer and even now, communication's been tough. A number of us are just trying to catch up right now. Lots of new people at the city level, people we're just speaking with for the first time tonight. Our first opportunity to even meet some of the new people that are in place. The huge size and scope is daunting. The sheer magnitude of just one of these areas being presented would be a challenge. Certainly, two or three or more brings on unimaginable needs for specifics and considerations of the potential complications, problems and increased cost to the city. I looked also at what I see as Auburn's assets. Some of the areas being considered involved, what is really, really special about Auburn and the very reason why some of us decided to move here originally, along with the rolling hills and farmlands that are right in our midst, in-town in Auburn, still intact, most walkable neighborhoods imaginable. Those quiet streets are the greater Lake Street area, small, single-family homes, little narrow front lots with little front porches, a garden and a garage in the backyard. Very mixed incomes. It's not fancy, but it is historic because they are still unchanged, intact and loved, and it shows. Those historic neighborhoods, those historic neighborhoods actually are fewer and fewer every year across the country. And it's the last one we have in Auburn. And the very key and one of the secrets to why Greater Lake Street area and nearby has survived, single-family homes on small lots are interspersed by homes on larger lots. They're perfectly legal. This non-conforming word concerns me somewhat. And their beauty is that they provide the essential green space, the views of the hillside evergreens above us and they open our vistas to our neighbors' flowers, shade trees and more. They're integral and essential and they are a big key to why this neighborhood has existed for 100 years. And I'm concerned about the cars. So what about the numbers? Some people have addressed here already tonight. If you replace one of our larger lots with a tear down and build a bigger building, up to 16 apartments, two cars per apartment is 32 cars. up to 16 apartments, two cars per apartment is 32 cars, maybe a high schooler with a car, what about visitors that come for the week and stay over, a party celebration? We're easily up to 40 cars, maybe 50 under special circumstances. Where do we park those cars on our quiet, walkable street? In the quiet, livable area where folks ride bikes, jog, and visit with each other? And how do you get the cars out of the neighborhood? Onto Court Street? That's hard even now. Or do we send them down Davis? And how is it all handled? With more staff that have to have high expertise in this special area with a lot more cost to the city after all of this takes place? And what about the noise? Multi-apartments?
So your, your time is, your three minutes are up. If you want to finish, you can, um, do so after other people have had an opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'd like to.
Hello, Dennis Bergeron, 23 Dexter Avenue in Auburn, Maine. I want to thank the staff for the work on this and the board for their service. I served on the planning board for many years, and I know how zoning issues are so much fun. I want to say that I fully support the form-based code. I was on the 2010 comp plan. The idea of moving the city, densifying the city is a good idea. I just think the, uh, prescription for increased density is, uh, needs to be thought out a little bit more. I mean, one of the things I remember most about planning board meetings was struggles over parking and trying to figure out where to put the cars with residential development. So, uh, I would move forward the first part of the recommendation to adopt the form-based code and the dimensional changes, but I'd, if possible, I would put a pause or table or reconsider the density level to something a little less than that. And I don't know how, there's no science to picking that number, I don't think, but I think it makes good sense to think about it. So, thank you very much.
Hi, good night, good evening. My name is Scott Shapiro. I own land on Court Street. I own about five acres, um, that I've been looking at developing for probably 15 years. And, um, I've looked at it in many different ways. I, there's a great need for housing in Auburn. Location is very close to all the schools. And, yeah, that's right, right here, right across from Park Ave. And I have, um, the access right to Park Avenue. With this change, um, I've looked at, you know, building houses here for my parents. They're aging, getting something in place for them, but the density just doesn't work for me. The cost of building homes are just too much for this piece of land. This is a perfect infill lot. And with this change, uh, which I just found out about, I could do something here potentially. I grew up on Orchard Street, and my parents are still there, and I'd love to be able to build something like that there, you know, like everyone's been talking about. But I would have the flexibility also to do other things. So, but, you know, I think this just creates a lot of flexibility for people with the housing crisis that we have here, which is everywhere. And so I fully support this. You know, I know you have to look at all the factors when any development comes up, safety, lighting, density, um, you know, where everything is placed anyway. So you'd always get a, a way to look at this in any kind of development. When people are talking about, um, tearing down a couple of houses to put up a multifamily house, I, as a developer, I don't think that that would be financially feasible, right? To buy a couple of, you know, $250,000 houses, that makes your lot $500,000 to start with to build a multifamily house. I don't think you could do that. So, um, in particular, in my case, I think this is a great way to go. I definitely would not want to change the character of, um, the Lake Street School area, um, and I don't think that will happen with this change. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Clumick. I live in the Amberly Way, Briar Cliff Knoll Development, across from Court Street in Auburn. Um, I'm also part owner of Acreage on Court Street near the Auburn Middle School, so I'm here not only as a 41-year resident of Auburn who received notification of the Zone Map Amendment, but also as someone who would like to utilize their property to provide additional housing options within the Court Street urban residential area. My husband and I have five children. We are currently a part of the Fairview School in Edward Little Community, and we have several friends and family members who continue to feel the impacts of our housing shortage. And though we have some, uh, seen more recent development within the city, and there will certainly be some additional development in the future, it's really within only the zones that would allow for it to happen today, and it's simply just not enough to meet the growing demand. I empathize with those here expressing concern this evening, but feel confident as a resident myself that we can help ease this housing shortage through these zone amendments while upholding the integrity of our neighborhoods by ensuring a fir, a firm balance between urban and rural living. And I trust that despite these zone changes, and this is really key, there are still layers of approvals that need to take place before any development can occur, including public hearings just like this one. I know that we all want to continue to feel as though we can be proud of the community that we live in, to feel like it's home, and I think that we can do that while still offering additional housing opportunities. So I would like to ask the planning board to think beyond the concern that you hear this evening in this room, but also think about those who are not represented here, those who are struggling to find a home, who are worried about where they may live in a year or in 10 years, because I know that I've seen a lot of that concern throughout this community. I would also ask that you consider the time and the effort and the very strategic and thoughtful work that went into developing this future land use plan with all impacts in mind, the good and the bad, and make what might feel in this moment and in this room like the unpopular vote, but certainly the one that will help grow our city and invest in our future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Spencer Dunn again, 530 Court Street. I guess I would also like to address the affordability aspect and the affordability crisis with the housing shortage we're experiencing across the U.S. right now, and in particular in Maine. Housing prices in Maine have skyrocketed 20% in the past year or two, and that's a moderate estimate, and developers who I'm sure are trying to get buying up and/or trying to get off their hands large parcels of land so that they can plop 200, 300, $400,000 homes at cost with the current expensive materials to build that is going to fundamentally reshape the dynamic and socioeconomic dynamics within a lot of these communities. 10, 15, 20 years ago, you could easily plop down a 150, 200,000, 250,000 home in this area, and now if you want to do the same, you're looking at half a million dollars at the high end and probably 300, 350 at the low end, the type of homes that would probably be trying to go into these areas. That's going to price someone like me, who's only 23 years old, out of Auburn, right? And I have every intention of wanting to stay in this city or potentially come back in due time, but I'm not going to be unable to do so if the housing prices in this area skyrocket to the level of Portland and extending further to Greater Boston. These are regions that themselves didn't deal properly with their housing crisis and their housing shortage, and now we, 10, 20, 30 years later, are experiencing the after, after-effects of their mismanagement and lack of willingness, and the prices of the land in this area are going up in accordance with the prices increasing elsewhere, right? It shouldn't be that rent in Auburn, which has far less services transportation-wise and just from a sewage and water district spanned out onto our city, should have matching prices relative to Greater Portland and even Greater Boston. That seems a little bit confusing from a regular old resident trying to find a home or an apartment in this area to have matching prices despite not having matching services, strictly because developers want to cash in on luxury and deluxe housing developments and apartments, for that matter. Average rent in the past decade has increased significantly, if not by 100% in some areas and on some properties. That's not affordable for people. Wages in Auburn-Louisville and Greater Andrews-Coggan aren't keeping up with that, and putting a bunch of expensive or market-rate housing that ultimately is going to be at the upper end isn't really going to ease the housing shortage or the affordability crisis that is really at the heart of the matter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we do still have people waiting on Zoom as well to speak for a first time, so.
Okay, great, thank you. So before we hear from the, sorry, I guess that man actually, gentleman actually was a repeat, so I'm sorry. We'll go to Zoom now, and then we'll come back to the room.
Great, thanks. I have three people with their hand up. First up is, is Margaret. Go ahead, Margaret.
Thank you. My name is Margaret Meyer. I live at 27 Hillcrest Street. I've been here for 41 years. I would like to say one thing about your letter to homeowners. The exhibits were so small that streets were not clearly identified, and even the keys were unreadable. So for some people, I imagine they got that letter and may not have even taken it seriously. And I think going forward, when you send out a letter, you should do maybe one proposal that affects that area so that the exhibits can be readable. Also, going from an urban residential to traditional residential would drastically change the feel of our neighborhood. I am in that Lake Street neighborhood. I'm right off Gammage Avenue between, um, Shepley and Oakland. A lot of people purchase their homes in this area for the quiet, for the safety, less traffic, family raising, and proximity to schools. We can walk our neighborhood. We do have our little stores around here. Um, it's a concern of mine that multifamily homes are not maintained as well. You can see that in Auburn when you see landlord-owned or multifamily homes. There are currently empty lots in currently zoned multifamily sections of the city that could be developed, and there is land that can be developed. The people who have spoken, who have large parcels of five acres, I'm not sure that I understand why they haven't been able to develop those areas. And I've spoken to many of my neighbors and people online who are not in favor of this change. I'd also like to just comment on something that was said about some areas are protected because, um, the way the development was done, only one family homes are allowed. So in a way, you're setting up a discrepancy, and I'm not sure I really like that idea that some people are protected from the development and those of us in our little neighborhood are not. I'm not sure why you can't change that 25-foot thing so that the man could build on when he's on Lake Street and can go to you and get that approved. I feel like property values will drop for us, and I do think our neighborhood will change. And there are many of us who bought here for the very reason that it is one family or a few two-family. And I would hope that this planning board would delay a vote on this, get out more information to property owners so that you can get more feedback. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. Next up is Pam Russo. Go ahead, Pam.
All right, so I'm still here. Several things. I agree that there is going to be too much traffic. Um, I do not understand about why we don't have a grandfather clause. Uh, my brother is the, different name, but in Carlisle, Massachusetts, the person that develops all this, and he doesn't understand why, uh, that isn't true here. We need to consider what we want our city to be. And so that is really concerning to me, and if I go over, I'm going to go at the end and start again. The character of our city will change. I am not against development. I am not against keeping what we've already done or already have in our works. I don't have a problem with that, but there's no reason, I don't know of any city that doesn't have a grandfather clause. And I have got to agree with almost everybody here that we need to go like we already have, not go into this, oh, say, oh, you have a, uh, screen porch that wasn't there before, and now we're going to do it, you know, or was there before and where you can't rebuild it. That's ridiculous. And that's all I have to say right this second.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Kate Jacobs. Go ahead, Kate.
Thank you. My name is Kate Jacobs. I'm at 88 Coburn Street, um, and I think I'm one of the property owners that this is trying to, uh, attract, um, in that I bought my property, which is a double lot. Um, I bought that with the intention of doing something with that extra lot, um, and I appreciate that this change would give me more options with what I could do with that bit of property. Um, as a wider community member, I agree with several other people who have spoken tonight that the density allowed on these types of lots is far too high. For the size of my lot, basically saying I could put four units on it is, is laughable, um, and that it's so out of character with everything else. Um, I like the idea of being able to contribute to the housing crisis with the land I do have, but that is far too much. So I would ask you to reconsider what those limits could be. Um, my other big concern is the huge swath of land that this is just blanketing with the opportunity for commercial and agricultural uses. All your consultant talked about were little mom-and-pop corner stores, but the list of things included in that letter go way beyond that. And I certainly don't want to see my neighborhood, which is strictly single home, almost strictly single home, there are some multi, um, families here, start getting, like, industrial things or bigger commercial or agricultural things inserted in the middle of our neighborhood. That's just not appropriate, and I think what you showed before with the spot zoning is exactly what you should have for those specific instances. So I'm deeply concerned about that. More specific to my area, there's a small creek that runs by that's currently in the multifamily, um, zone, and I wonder if, um, how this would affect considerations on that sort of ecosystem that's there. So again, I am interested in seeing this move forward in some capacity, um, because we do need to do something about housing, but I think the broad inclusion of really residential neighborhoods, right along with more commercial streets and zones, um, and the density that's allowed and the commercial use is allowed, needs to be revisited. Thank you.
Thank you. Are we, are there any more people waiting on Zoom?
There are no more hands raised in Zoom.
Great, thank you. So now we'll return to in-person, so I think I would like to invite anybody to, up to the podium to speak that wishes to.
First of all, I was remiss in thanking you for your service. You spend a lot of time in the work that you do, and it's very time-consuming. I know you try to do the best you can for the community, but thank you for your service. I also thank the staff for the work that they put in to support you as well. So I wanted to begin by doing that. The point that I wanted to make, we didn't have a chance to, but I, I just want to be clear about this, uh, having served in this chamber before. Housing does not pay for itself. We need housing. People have to live someplace, and we need children to go to school. But a home with one But a home with one child does not pay enough taxes to educate the child, never mind pick up the trash and plow the street, send out an ambulance, and support a fire station. You simply look at the budget, you can see those numbers. You know, when it's $12,000 or more to educate one child, very few people paying that in property taxes. But having said that, we all have to support the schools, but we ought not to assume that this housing is somehow going to pay for itself. We'll not do that simply because of the amount of services required for each individual residence. That's been true for decades to do that. So I would ask you to think carefully about all that you've heard. People have been sincere in their representations to you. I don't see any urgency here, no fire alarms going off. I would ask you to provide more opportunity for input before a decision of this magnitude is made. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark Chassie again from Auburn, 55 Mayfield Road. I had a couple of questions. One is, I don't know if families are still increasing by, you know, 1.2 children, you know, per household, if that's increased, but what's the definition of a housing crisis? And how did it originate in Auburn? Not originate in Auburn, but why, why does Auburn have a housing crisis? And give me the definition of a housing crisis as well. Thanks.
Is there anybody else who wishes to speak?
People, just as a reminder, please speak into the mic. They're having trouble hearing on Zoom.
Great, thank you.
So I also just want to point out that likely those who received a letter, which I too received a letter, we all have a home. We all have likely lived there for a number of years, and we don't necessarily invite others from the community outside of these areas who may be struggling to find a home. And we've talked a little bit about affordability of purchasing a single-family home or building a single-family home, and many individuals are really looking towards rental options, which we just don't have in this city. I just also want to call out that there may be some concerns about future development, and we want to also remember that with each of those individual developments, they will need to come back to planning board. There will be a public hearing, an opportunity to voice concerns about those developments individually. But I think a blanket move to not approve a zone amendment such as this, you know, these things take a lot of time. And there are, there is a sense of urgency because there are a number of people out there who are in need of housing in this city, who already live in this city. So I just wanted to call that out. Thank you.
I also did not express my appreciation, which I do have for a lot of work that went into this way prior to our learning about it, and we're so anxious to find out more about what was learned and discussed. I'm sorry, I'm drawing a blank right now, and I did have an important point to make. The houses in the Greater Lake Street area are extremely close to each other. The lots are really tiny. Any construction is going to impact those next-door neighbor houses in every way imaginable. Even if they have something built on their boundary in the backyard, it will make a difference. When you're starting to talk about big apartment buildings that are taking up almost an entire extra area in a lot, it is going to significantly impact many, many, many homes. You can see five, six, seven, eight homes just from any one spot right now. And that doesn't even start to address the questions that we have about what, commercial businesses and other small businesses, how many employees, up to 10 employees, each with a car, et cetera, et cetera, that were on that long list, I think, on the letter we received. Thank you very, very much for your time.
Is there anybody else that wishes to address the board? And there's nobody on Zoom?
No one on Zoom.
Thank you. So seeing none, I would ask for a motion to close public comment.
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks. All in favor? All right, it is now discussion time. There were a number of things brought up that I think need clarification, but I'll yield to the rest of the board first. Thoughts, comments, questions from the board?
Yeah, one, one that was just, the most recent point that was raised was, what's the definition of a housing crisis and why does Auburn have one? It just sounds like there's a lot of anecdotal phrasing like that, but is there, is there numbers? Is there a statistical representation of the number of people who are looking for houses? Or is it, I know it's part of the comprehensive plan to increase the population, but is there an actual number of people that are known?
There's no way to know exactly how many people are looking for housing. We see a lot fewer units on the market. The prices have risen sharply, whether that's a single-family home, duplexes, or larger multifamilies, the rents have risen sharply. And what we did, it's about two years ago now, is went through an exercise with the city council and mayor prior to the start of the comp plan, and I think it extended into the discussion of the comp plan a bit, looking at how our demand for services per, kind of per person or per unit exists currently. And the consensus was, after looking at police, fire, schools, is that Auburn could handle about 2,000 more units, 6,000 new residents, if we assumed three units, three residents per unit. And part of that calculation was looking at schools, which has come up a couple of times. And we're really not seeing a lot of the older community services, cost of community services studies, used to estimate somewhere between one and a quarter, one and a half, all the way up to two and a quarter kids per household. We've looked at school enrollment compared to new housing units in Auburn over the last, and this was a couple of years ago that we pulled all the data, but over the last 10 years preceding that or so. And we're really seeing something like, more like a third of a student per household being added as we add more housing units in Auburn. And that's, that's not differentiating between singles and multis and trying to get down to the, the level of number of bedrooms, but the housing units that have been delivered in Auburn over the past 10-plus years, we're averaging a third of a student. So that's a lot different math than, you know, let's say, two students or even one student. One new home paying $4,000 a year in taxes, trying to pay for the city's share of educating that child at $5,000 or $6,000 a year, the math doesn't work. $4,000 in revenues and $5,000 or $6,000 in costs, just looking at schools. But when you're talking about a third of a student, you know, three houses at $4,000 paying $12,000 a year in taxes to expend $6,000 on educating that one new student, those, those numbers seem to work for what we're seeing in Auburn for new housing.
Thank you. Any other questions, thoughts from the board?
I guess Riley had touched on it a little bit earlier. In reference to the setbacks, what is this going to do with, I guess, like the single-family homes that are going to be rezoned in here that are set back to the 25 feet? Is that going to make it so now they aren't able to do any modifications, build a garage or anything like that, and actually be out of code?
So the ones that are 25 feet back, it actually gives them a little bit more flexibility, I think, to expand that, in that, in that area. They just have to be cognizant that they can't go beyond what the standard is, so they can encroach in that area to make it more, in that, in that particular case, they would, if they are developing in the front, if we're just talking about the front setback, it'd be making the home more conforming or conforming if they, if they do a development that increases the footprint towards the, you know, towards the property line, so. And then Riley, just kind of to answer your question, I was going to chime in and I didn't. So I, I think the definition is, there's some economics to this, and that's really supply and demand. And as we see the rates of some of the rentals, it's a direct response to supply and demand. And at that point, we can say that there's a crisis. So I think that, that defines the definition of, of an issue where we outprice the livable wage here with what's available for housing units because there's not enough. Developers drive the housing cost up in a particular unit, and it, and it drives them out of the, of, out of the market. So I think that part of the definition is really the supply, the current supply and demand that's available in Auburn and the surrounding communities.
Go ahead. So I guess back to my question, I'll take away from Riley, is like, I live on Blackmore Street, and this would be affected by the zoning, but in regards to new constructions, I want to add a garage onto my house, is that going to have to be within the new setback standard, or is it going to be accepted as what it is currently, which is the 25 feet?
So you're, so most of the time, I don't know, we could probably take a look at your lot individually. Let's take a look at it. What's the address?
103 Blackmore.
We do, we do have a provision that may come into effect for that kind of a question as well. Oops, sorry.
I'm just, I guess, concerned in regards to this for, you know, that neighborhood, that street has really nice, single fam, all single-family homes, great yards, and I don't, I'm not married and don't have kids yet, but thinking of down the road in the future of, you know, preserving that and wanting to protect, you know, the lawn and the space that I do have, and thinking about potentially growing in the future of what that would actually do, and for everybody else who has a similar, similar situation.
Yeah, so you, based on where the driveway is, if you want, you know, you're going to expand, potentially you would expand the, your particular lot there in the driveway location, and I think there's a lot of room there for you to, you know, bring that forward and, and to, you know, put a garage into that space. The zoning changes, and I talked about this a little bit before, it's, it's not instantaneous, right? None, none of this stuff happens immediately or has to happen immediately. It has to be the want of the individual landowner to do something to their lot. The city, the city's not making anybody do anything specifically to their lot or change anything or, or change the conformity of their lot. So, you know, the gist of the, of the zoning is, is that it gives you a little bit more flexibility and to do what, what you want to do, to have the best home available for what the land you have, so.
And it, it does have provisions for external elements in each of the Form-based Code districts. I was just looking at garages. Detached garages actually have a minimum setback of 20 feet. Attached garages could line up with the face of.
Right. So and what about other items and stuff like, I wanted to put like an addition on the back of my house, what would, would that all be considered with the already standing, well, how my house is, I guess?
There's nothing here that could make you move your house or anything as part of that.
Yeah, just more or less not concerned about mine, per se, but just for other people who are wondering and have, you know, single-family homes and are thinking the same thing.
I think it's a great example to look at.
Just happened that my house fit the circumstances, I guess.
Back to the housing crisis, the, we had a, we got a email from Mayor Levesque with a concern from a person who lived at the Auburn Mall Apartments. She's been living there for a long time, and it's a less expensive rental to live in, but the property management has increased her rent. And she applauds, she applauded us for increasing rental units like the ones we did out on Grayson and the one that would be approved for by Home Depot there. But those projected rental costs were also more than she can afford. So with just adding units, I don't know that that actually fixes the pricing out. If there's just enough demand for the price to go up, that person at the Auburn Mall Apartments really doesn't. Does this, would you think that this change would address the concerns of that person who is, who doesn't have control of their rent price? And the increasing units we're putting in is not going to, has not changed her rent price, it's actually increased?
You know, that's, I think each of those cases are case-by-case basis, but again, I think if we go to the, the simple economics of it, if we increase the supply, right, we, we hopefully lessen the demand and then create opportunity for some of these folks. You know, there's, there's a whole, there's a balance between, you know, having low to moderate income housing in specific areas or not having it, or having low to moderate mixed in with market rate apartments. I think that's probably our best approach, you know, from my, just from my opinion, that's strictly an opinion. But there's, there's ways that we can go about addressing some of these issues with, with some of this mixed income requirements in, in some of the developments that we have. You know, and those are case-by-case, and that's really working with other departments within, within the city, community development in particular, that, you know, that allows things like that and provides TIF, tax increment financing and items like that, and, and give benefits to that. So it's all a balance of, you know, what the, you know, what the senior leadership wants to do and, and how they approach that. And that's, it's really site-specific, and if, if it makes sense, then, you know, that's when they, you know, that's when they can hopefully move that needle a little bit further in terms of addressing the specific lady that you were referencing.
I, I think it does in a sense. I'm just going to use 143 Lake Street here as an example, a single-family home. It's in the neighborhood, I think, that one lady, a couple people referenced this neighborhood as compact but, but desirable, a mix of singles and multis. This particular one, 5,000 square feet, two units on a 5,000-square-foot lot would be 17.24 units per acre. So I think everybody's thinking about a 16-unit building, but on these smaller lots, the density is averaged over the available lot size. Two units on 5,000 square feet is a density of 17.24 units per acre. This neighboring lot, a three-unit, that is a density of 5,000-square-foot lot, that is a density of 26-plus units per acre. So in excess of what we're talking about for, for an average. Now, these, a three-unit might be an anomaly in that neighborhood. But we're not necessarily talking about a 16-unit building or a 10-unit building. These are opportunities, I think, for a lot of these single and two-family homes. I don't know if this person that you were communicating with has family in the area, but it might be an opportunity for one of her family members to add a unit that they can't currently add, that kind of thing, where, where people can help their family or relatives provide a, a place to live at an affordable rate. That's not going to be everywhere, but I think those, those are some of the opportunities that can get at affordability with having a little more flexibility.
The other part of that is, you know, we look at, I know even on this board, we've got a lot of talent when it comes to real estate and a lot of experience with that, but we know that the, you know, the average in- But we know that the, you know, the average, and a lot of members of the public mentioned it today, that, you know, these units, these houses are $350,000, you know, or whatever. It's quite expensive. Doesn't make any sense to go in there, purchase a home on Lake Street and tear it down and try to build something for max capacity, right? So from a development standpoint, from a return on investment standpoint, it doesn't make sense to purchase something like this, demo it, and then build something new. So, you know, I just, I kind of wanna, you know, bring that to light. I think more people are interesting, interested in, an existing home, it's got good bones, it's got a good structure, let's fix it and let's maximize the lot as it is. I don't see, I don't see, and particularly in this market and the state, that you're gonna get people to demo existing structures and rebuild new, unless it's really dilapidated and it's, and it's, you know, a building that has a lot of, that's basically uninhabitable, right? Eric runs a program, it's the Dangerous, what's it Dangerous Housing Program?
Dangerous Building.
Dangerous Building Program. And it's, maybe one of those houses might qualify for a demo and a rebuild. But these new, these nice homes on Lake Street, those aren't, I don't see any of that changing. I don't see it changing for another, you know, 100 years if people are maintaining them.
So I want to touch on a few other things that I heard from people here. Can you comment on what your expectations are in terms of changes to traffic?
I mentioned this earlier, I think, you know, an easing way to minimize traffic is to bring the, is really to keep this, the buildings as close to the road as possible. You know, we talk about, people talked about speed and addressing that. So that's one of the, you know, that's one of the benefits of this type of Form-Based Code where, you know, development's close to the street, and we're really trying to make sure that that's what happens. In addition, any of the vacant lots that are available, you know, if this zoning recommendation goes to the council and it passes, that will be a requirement for the new developments. So the new developments will really take that, you know, front of the street, close to the road, sidewalks, the ability to slow the traffic down. So, you know, in a sense, this zoning, I think, helps the overall traffic throughout this 1,600 acres. But there may be, maybe, there may be items that pop up, you know? And I think that individual, an individual issue maybe have to, maybe needed to be addressed with signage or something like that. Or if, you know, if it's a neighborhood road, we're working on Court Street right now. We're looking at a road diet, essentially eliminating a lane. It's very challenging to do that because of our traffic counts through the city on Court Street so high. And eliminating that creates stacking issues and the coordination between all the lights. So, you know, DOT is gonna have some real pushback on that. We've, I wrote some grants, and we're trying to address that through the Complete Streets program and really address that, you know, pedestrian-friendly feel to these neighborhoods. And I think that the best, a lot of ways we address that is with some of the zoning, so.
Thanks.
Can I have a follow-up question with that since it's on topic?
Yep.
I'm trying to figure out where that would be applied. Because we don't see too many opportunities for this to really exist. As you just showed on Lake Street, no one's building a 16-unit there. No one's, there aren't really any major or that many lots where people are gonna develop new in that tight neighborhood, right? How much of this is really gonna impact that neighborhood? Because there really isn't that much opportunity. And if I'm wrong, please, please correct me.
I think the biggest opportunity in those existing fairly densely developed neighborhoods is maybe adding a unit above a carriage house or something like that, but not a brand-new structure.
So it's not gonna bring any houses closer to the street. Therefore, it's not going to really impact traffic really at all. Where it's gonna impact traffic is other sites that might be developed.
Where you have some room for brand-new, brand-new development.
Right, so solving, this isn't going to solve some of our traffic issues. It's just going to prevent other issues from coming, from getting worse with new development.
And I think to the extent that, you know, maybe this is a good example of a, I don't know what the date built was, but it's set back slightly more than the rest of the homes, 1948. You know, they may be able to add a porch. So there is some of their building closer to the street. Maybe they wanted to and couldn't do it before, maybe they don't care to, but they would be able to with the change.
Okay, just so if people hear that this is going to solve our Court Street traffic problem or, you know.
It's not.
There are other things that were done on Lake Street that probably helped it somewhat with curb cutouts and so forth, that's beyond my expertise. But this isn't going to be that savior for traffic.
I think over time, it could help calm traffic but not reduce the numbers.
Thank you.
Great, so moving on, another thing I wanted to come back to, the idea with a non-conforming property, if something happens to it, what are my options in terms of rebuilding? Because we heard a lot of questions about, okay, why is there no grandfather clause? Is there a grandfather clause? What are the, what are the rules in Auburn?
Yes, so there's a couple of different standards. If somebody intentionally removes structural members of a building that are within a setback area, if more than 50% of those structural members are removed, then the replacement is considered new construction and has to meet the setbacks. So you have one of these non-conforming porches, you can maintain it forever. But you buy a dilapidated house that was let go for a while, and the porch really needs to be replaced, you may lose that porch if you have to take more than 50% of the structural members off. It's considered new construction if more than 50% of the structural members are replaced.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'm just gonna chime in here real quick, just kind of by the numbers, just looking at the folks that showed up and what people talked about. You know, there was some definite concern about commercial density, multifamily. That's what I felt was primarily the issue from the public. You know, in terms of the setback, I think there was one public comment here that they said the setback was gonna be a positive for them. So I think as we're like looking from a public standpoint, and I'm sure Matt, you're gonna get to some of your other points too. I feel like from a setback standpoint, in general, the public was in favor of it, that one person.
Yeah, I just, there were multiple questions about grandfathering, so I just wanted to get that answered. Let's see, the last thing is, I think, so with our current zones, the housing density is actually built into them, is that correct?
Yes.
Yep.
Each zone has a maximum density.
So were we to say, we like Form-Based Code, but we don't like this density, we don't have an existing code that would work for that, or we do?
Well, we just looked at a couple of examples. The, this one in particular, 5,000 square feet with a single unit, with two units rather, is 17 units per acre.
Yeah, no, I understand that. The question is, is there a different zone?
Multifamily urban is close, but it doesn't fix any of the setback issues.
Got it, and it's not Form-Based Code?
It would be correct, and it wouldn't be quite as dense as that.
Right, okay.
At least on a duplex or three-unit, we could do the math on the other ones. But it doesn't quite get you to that density, but it doesn't fix the non-conformities.
Right, I mean, I guess, and so there was one comment about, and I just wonder about the possibility, what possibilities are available to us? Someone who was in support of Form-Based Code but wanted lower densities, not similar densities. Are there any of our Form-Based Code zones that we have that would meet that?
You could have a Form-Based Code with a more prescriptive maximum density, though. Could be the, you know, the T-42B or something for up on the hill in Court Street that's different than lower on Court Street. It's certainly an option.
Got it, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any more questions from, yeah, Mr. Bergeron?
There was also a number of concerns from people who had problems with the communication. And this is the first time I've actually got one. And I gotta agree that in the information that you get mailed to you, the map that you get, there's a bunch of maps. But yeah, for all this acreage, it's about a two-and-a-half-inch map. I think that it would be, if we do decide to table this, because there is also some mention of other people wanting more time to think about it and other opportunities to speak. If other communication were sent out, I think it would be helpful to have a link sent out saying, you can go, or not even a link, because it's hard to type in, but you say, you can go to the city website, go to this tab, you can expand the maps, you can click on the zones, you can see what the rules currently, or even a table that says, here's what is currently allowed and here's what isn't. It's, it was a, as being on the board for a couple of years, I've heard people mention this problem before. But this is the first time I've actually been faced with it. And it's actually, I happen to know where to go and look at the maps and stuff. But someone who just gets this in the mail would have trouble, especially if you didn't know the type of map you're looking at, to even identify where their home is on it. So I just think a link, if we do decide to table it and send out more notifications, a link or a description of how to get to the zoning maps would be included.
Great, thank you for that. We started with eight pages, we tried to get it to four, but the other
I imagine.
Recommendation that we heard tonight was to split them up by change, and we could do that too, to provide more real estate for the maps.
Yeah, Mr. Dwyer.
I've got a couple. It was a common theme around, and I know, John, you talked about it at the beginning of this segment of the meeting around parking. But that was questioned several times through the evening. Can you just reiterate how parking is related to this, to this development, to this zoning, and what types of restrictions are in place?
So for each, for each unit, ADU, you need one parking spot. And then beyond, if it's beyond four units, you need one guest parking spot. That's the requirement for parking, particularly around residential uses.
So if your parcel doesn't have the space for that, are they able to develop that or not?
They are not able to develop that.
I do want to acknowledge Mr. Labrie, because I've had a number of people come to me about a sense of urgency around their family dynamics. So I'd like to reiterate that. Folks caring for family members with special needs, on one end, sandwiched between caring for their parents. I happen to have parents in my, in their 80s that I would like to care for. I've been told on no uncertain terms will they ever live with us. But to have that option for me to build another something, a dwelling of some sort, I know a number of families who, particularly in this tight housing market, would love the option of caring for family members young or young at heart. So thank you for that, Dan. Let's see, a number of safety concerns. I don't know if we talked about the traffic. Again, I don't think we're delusional in thinking that we're solving that. But I also think the steps in place to not make it any worse, is how I have it sized up. I would like you to comment on the suggestion about T-41 versus T-42. If you can articulate the differences there and why we're choosing this to go into a T-42 for everybody here?
I'd have to have it in front of me, but the, I think the biggest takeaway with that is the, is the building lot coverage. So 4.2 is 70% and 4.1 is 60%.
And T-41 is a maximum of two stories, where T-42 is a maximum of three stories. So you certainly drop, drop a story. John covered the lot coverage. The setbacks are a little bit larger in T-41, 15-foot minimum, whereas T-42 was a five-foot minimum, 25-foot maximum in T-41, whereas the T-42 was a 15-foot maximum.
As well as the option to not only mix in the pizza markets of the world, but other business entities, I think was a concern. Can you comment on that?
It does further restrict some of that, but still allows, we had the table up here.
When you say restrict, you mean 4.1 restricts?
There are fewer commercial uses allowed in T-41 than there are in T-42.
Are there fewer allowable or a few that need special exception?
I'm looking to go to that now.
I know we're putting you on the spot.
John put this table in here for that reason, so.
Well, and to Mr. Bergeron's point, I'm having a little bit of a hard time. I don't know about you guys, reading the small print.
So general, general retail is still goes to planning board. Age-restricted retail still needs to go to planning board. Specialty shops isn't allowed use, but in 4.1, it's still able to go to planning board. The biggest difference is restaurants with 30 or more seats are not allowed in 4.1, whereas in 4.2 it is. And then I think that's, I think that's it, really, honestly, I think that's it.
Art galleries are a special exception instead of a permitted use. I don't think we'll see a lot of those, but.
So it looks like that restaurant, it's a special exception, right? Is that what I'm saying?
Restaurants up to 30 seats are a special exception in T-42, but not allowed in T-41.
The, you know, we did consider 4.1, but, you know, after driving through the neighborhoods and, you know, getting a relationship of where the houses are located, the 15 feet didn't meet a lot of the needs for some of that for conformity. So that was, that was one of the reasons that kind of leaned us in that direction versus 4.1. It did allow a little bit more flexibility with some of those, some of those smaller lots. So that's, that's one of the reasons why we kind of landed there.
Is that enough, in your professional opinion, to stay strong with that recommendation of 4.2 versus 4.1?
I'm not married to it personally. But again, you know, looking for the greater, you know, I always, from a professional standpoint, I always look for the greater good of the most. So in that regard, I'd stay firm, but I'm not married to it.
And if I were to put, propose putting a 30-plus-seat cafe, it's still going through a planning board process for approval, even though it's approved in a 4.2 zone.
Yeah, even up to 30 seats, even the smaller ones require planning board approval.
All right, so there's another layer to that happening, rather than just giving it the blanket. Okay. I think that's all, that's all I have.
Okay, thanks. Anyone else have anything? So if nobody else has any questions or comments on this, we need a motion to move forward.
I would make a motion to table this to next month's meeting, allow for another round of mail to be sent out that would include a link to the maps that are included in the information.
Okay, I have a motion to table to the next regular meeting of the planning board. Okay, I have a motion to table to the next regular meeting of the planning board. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion, debate of this motion?
Yes. So when we've tabled things, this is a point of order and shows that I'm still fairly new to this process, but we've tabled things and that means they're, they go away. But this, because we're saying table to a date certain, we will in fact address this at the next meeting and not be pushed on indefinitely.
That is correct. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no debate? All those in favor? All those opposed? Abstentions? Carries? What? I don't, I didn't count.
I think it was five to two.
Five to two, that's what I saw. So we are at 9:45. By, we are beyond the scheduled time, the scheduled adjournment of our meeting, so by our rules, we need a motion to continue. I think it's important that we at least address item 11. So yeah, at this point, we need a motion.
Can we just, if we do decide to continue, can we just do a quick, couple-minute intermission if that was the case?
Yeah, you can call for a recess anytime. You just say, I make a motion.
Oh, I'd like to make a motion for a five-minute recess.
Okay. Can, so we have that motion on the floor, but before, can I just pause you there for a second? I'd like to figure out whether or not we're going to continue.
Yeah, that's probably a good point.
Yep.
So you're asking to?
So we need a motion. By our, by our rules, we're past the time where we would normally adjourn, so we need a motion to continue with any items on the agenda. I would like to get to item 11 because we, in this meeting, by our rules, we are supposed to elect a chair and a vice chair.
Okay, I think what I'm trying to understand with your strategy here is, are you then wanting to also talk about nine, 10, and then get to 11? Or are you wanting to, you know, table nine, obviously public comment, and then go to 11? I guess I'm trying to understand.
So I think this, that's something that the board itself can decide if we choose to continue.
I'd like to make a motion to continue the meeting.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion to continue.
A second.
Do I have a second? I have a second. All in favor? Opposed? Nope. Okay, so we will continue the meeting. Was there a motion to recess for?
Yeah, like a five-minute recess would be great.
Okay, we will come back at, in five minutes. Okay. Welcome back. We will now put our glasses on so we can read. Take up item number nine, a public hearing on zoning update on the Washington Street area, moving 242 acres from general business to commercial form-based code gateway development district.
So this was another example of where we didn't have a district that matches the gateway development district exactly. So we looked at both the desire to minimize the number of new zoning districts as well as what do we, what do we have that closely matches that district? The goals of the district were really to allow for mixed-use development, to become a more attractive gateway, a more attractive transition. We've done a lot of work along other corridors downtown, and this is really the in-town, downtown portion of Minut Avenue, and extending slightly out Washington Street to just beyond Brickyard Circle, but not beyond where the speed limit is slowed, lowered compared to the, the more highway-oriented portion of Washington Street. The goal is to eventually make the area more pedestrian-friendly than it has been, more attractive as a gateway. We're proposing this sort of shortened area because we really haven't addressed the high-speed traffic that needs to be addressed on the rest of Washington, but we do think there's an opportunity for this more pedestrian-oriented development to happen on the in-town end of that, that strip with this proposal. I know it's late. You've read the staff report. I'm happy to answer any other questions. We believe the T five one will allow for development that's consistent with what the comp plan calls for. I think as we start to, in the future, make the traffic adjustments further out Washington Street, we'll probably want to look a little more closely at that to make sure that we're not creating more non-conformities. There's a lot more single-story buildings as you move further out. The T five one, for new construction anyways, is a minimum of two stories. We're looking for a higher intensity of development, a higher density, four-story maximum, so not out of character with some of the other buildings that were there. So with that, happy to answer any other questions and hopefully if there's anybody here from the public, we can hear from them as well.
Great. Thank you very much. Any questions from the board for staff? Hearing none, I'd like to move to public comment. Do I have a motion?
You're moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second? All in favor? This time, I'd like to invite any members of the public forward to speak to the board.
I feel pretty lonely. Mike Gatto from Stony Brook Land use here tonight to represent JIG Investments, who owns the property that is PID 199052 that the council added to this change. My work experience on this property goes back to 2008, when we did surveys and did a letter map amendment to get it out of the floodplain. And this property is zoned industrial, and it's been on the market since 2009. I have had many opportunities to talk to people about developing it. As industrial, it just hasn't worked. The client I represent today thought he had two industrial users that would be able to use this property, but because this property only has access from Brickyard Circle, it makes it very difficult to access with large vehicles, large trucks, and heavy-duty truck traffic. And so this, this project is more suited towards a lower commercial or housing-type project. So we're asking for this property to be brought into that zone, and we support the staff's comments and things. I can answer any questions if you have them, but after working on this property for a lot of years, it's not going to see industrial development based on everything I've seen so far. So we're asking to be put into that crack zone.
We're going to do the wave, apparently.
Oh, I like that.
Thank you very much. Seeing, seeing no other members of the public, I need a motion to close public comment.
Is there anyone on Zoom?
Is there any, sorry, is there anyone on Zoom?
Yes, there is.
Oh, there is.
One person. I'll bring her in. Carol Lane. Go ahead, Carol.
Yes, hi. Thank you for not, I was sitting here screaming, "No, I'm here." So thank you for acknowledging me. I would like to thank, first of all, Mr. Bergeron for acknowledging the difficulty of the, the letter and the maps, reading the maps. I've spoken to a lot of other people in my neighborhood, and there's definitely some concern around this. Maybe I'm the only person that's stuck around long enough to say anything, but I do have some comments. First of all, if you could just tell me the name of the gentleman who just spoke, because I think the area that I'm concerned about is the area he's talking about. So I'll just put that out there, if you can put it in the chat or something. But is there any way I can show you guys my screen? I have a picture which kind of demonstrates my concern. Is that possible?
No, I don't think it is.
Okay. Okay, so.
I will ask Liz Allen to put his name in the chat, though, so you can see it.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. So I'll just let you know what my concerns are, and again, I'm from Arbania Street, but I also own another property here in the same neighborhood with my sister, and it's a multi-unit. So we are landlords. I want to say for the record, I think a lot of this housing crisis, apart from just being maybe affected by the pandemic, also has to do with greed on the part of landlords because the rents that are currently considered market value, I refuse to charge people because I know what people make here and I know what my tenants can afford. And that market rents is not what people can afford, so I just want to say that. But getting to the point of the development in the neighborhood, my concern is very much been a theme throughout the evening, which is green spa, my concern is about retaining green spaces that make Auburn what it is, that make it, that make it livable and walkable and a nice place to be. So I'm very concerned specifically in my neighborhood, which is Arbania Street, and that little piece of area that I believe that gentleman, Mr. Gatto, owns is a beautiful wooded area, abutting Taylor Brook. I'm concerned twofold. The buff, that area is a buffer zone, basically, in my neighborhood between my street and the railroad tracks and also Washington Ave beyond that. And I'd like to know what's being proposed as development for that area, since it's, you know, one of the very few wooded areas in my neighborhood. And it, it needs to be preserved. It provides buffer, it contributes to the quality of life. In the summer, in the spring, you hear the peepers, you see foxes in the neighborhood. I mean, I guess what I'm getting at is that all the changes proposed, when I received this letter, I felt really kind of a shock to my system because I do a lot of walking all over Auburn, and it's not that easy if you have a couple of dogs to find good places to walk and places where you can see green things and appreciate the lake or appreciate a wooded area. In 2019, if I could show you the picture, it would help, but I could just email the everyone on the board. I emailed a few years ago because Hammond Lumber, who's also one of my neighbors, I know I'm in a mixed-use area, Hammond Lumber in 2019 took it upon themselves to quote, "clean up" their area, which really entailed cutting down the buffer zone. There were maybe, gosh, I don't know, three or four acres of healthy wooded area between Hammond Lumber and all of the houses on my street, and they just got rid of them. So when that happened, what I used to see woods and hear spring peepers, I now see the rail cars at, on the safe, I forget the name of the business, but. the rail cars at, on the safe, I forget the name of the business, but they, the rail cars that carry chemicals and stuff.
So I think you're, you used your three minutes, so, but I very much appreciate your comments, thank you.
Well, if there were other people here, I'd get another chance, so that's really a little unfair. Just because there are no other people, I don't get to come around again, but.
All right, I'll tell you what, I'll give you three more minutes.
Okay, so the point being that I don't see the difference between this being tabled and the other proposals being tabled for more public input, because I don't want to see those trees removed from my neighborhood, and I'm relatively certain if I were to go around my neighborhood knocking on doors, which I won't do because it's a pandemic, I'd hear the same thing from a lot of other people. I'd like the opportunity for more public input. I didn't know about this, it's right in my backyard, I don't think anyone else knows about it. If they didn't get this letter, they certainly don't, because I'm, I'm fairly aware of things, and I didn't know about it. And I'm fairly internet savvy, and I was able to get on and see some of the maps, but they were still hard to enlarge, but, you know, somebody who's not internet savvy, they wouldn't have gone on and found the maps to look more closely at. I hope I made some sense, and I appreciate the extra time.
Okay.
My concerns are with green space and the livability of our neighborhoods. Having a place for your kids to go and play, having a place to walk your dogs and see something other than rail cars and Hammond Lumber and McDonald's and businesses.
Great, thank you very much. Do we have anyone else on Zoom?
No, I see no other raised hands.
Okay, thank you very much. And seeing no one else here in person, I'd take a motion to close public comment.
So moved.
And I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor? Okay, discussion, comment, question, more questions for staff?
This is, this is the, this is the section where we were talking about, hopefully when we do have the, if the corridor does come through, that there would be, we were trying to connect the walking path between the neighborhoods, is that right?
So yeah, and I think there's more opportunity for that with this change than there is currently. All of this purple area is industrial now, it could be a rail yard, propane distribution. This change would make the uses more pedestrian-friendly, a mix of residential, residential's not allowed there now, although it is allowed throughout the rest of this general business area, so even closer to Arbania, you could build exactly what, the housing density is at 17 units per acre, you could build that here now. But there is, the city has acquired the rail right-of-way on the other side of Washington Street. There is a plan to eventually, well, we're seeking funding to construct a rail trail that connects from downtown at Bonnie Park all the way out to here. Hopefully someday we can get across Washington Street, but I think if this develops as mixed-use or residential, that's our best bet of getting a, a trail connection out of the project.
Any other questions, thoughts on this project in general? Or on this, this zoning amendment in general?
This is a gate, part of a gateway project that's been discussed since the 50s, and this would be a stepping stone towards realizing a better gateway to Auburn. Is that correct?
It, it's part of implementing, I think, the transportation project that's been envisioned since the 50s, but I think the, the new direction as far as making parts of this corridor with slower-moving traffic walkable, that's a new element, but it is part of completing those, those older transportation improvements.
Mm-hmm. Anyone else got anything for this? Okay, well, to continue, we would need a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to recommend the city council to amend the proposed boundary to be adjusted from general business to downtown traditional center, T-5.1. The total amendment includes 240 plus or minus acres shown on the map.
Thank you, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, is there any debate on this motion? Hearing from no one, I'd call for a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you, the motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item number 10 on our agenda, public comment. I see no members of the public present. So is there anybody on Zoom that wants to just address the board?
I see no hands raised on Zoom.
Thank you. We will now move on to item number 11, election of chair and vice chair. So every February meeting, it is our opportunity to elect a new chair and a new vice chair. Currently, I serve as the chair, and Mr. Bergeron serves as the vice chair. Would anybody like to nominate anyone, including themselves, to be chair of the planning board?
I would. I'd like to nominate Evan Seere as chair.
You're nominating Evan in absentia?
Yes.
And is, does he know he's being nominated?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So we have one nomination for chair, do we have any additional nominations for chair? No, all those in favor of Evan Seere as chair? Raise your hands. We have a new chair. Evan Seere will be chair from the March meeting.
That's what you get for missing a meeting.
Got to be here. Vice chair, do we have any nominations for vice chair?
I would like to nominate Riley Bergeron as vice chair.
Do you accept that nomination?
Yes.
I can get down on one knee.
Yes.
Any other nominations for vice chair?
I would nominate Mr. DeVal for vice chair.
Oh, that means we got a vote. All those in favor, is that?
Do you accept the nomination?
Do I accept the nomination? Actually, I'd kind of like to just be a person on the, a board member for a little bit, so no, I don't think I do. Thank you, Mr. DeVal.
I don't want to vote for anybody.
Any other nomination?
I'll nominate you.
He's scared his way in.
Okay, I'm, I think I'm going to put this to a vote. All those in favor of electing Riley Bergeron as vice chair? Opposed? No.
Abstentions.
All right, so miscellaneous items, what's coming up for March, aside from Court Street?
Okay, I would like to add one thing. I'd like to open up a discussion for a potential evaluation of action to remove the income standard from the agricultural zone.
Say more. So you want us to look at the ag zone and?
Yeah, yeah, I think we need to do a further evaluation into the ag zone and, and building within the ag zone, and the income standard that's associated with building within the ag zone.
Okay.
Is, is there already an item that we had somewhere along the line to address that? Because I remember we discussed that last month about how the, the new state statute might make our?
Yeah, we reduced the standard from 50 to 30% a couple of years ago, but there's LD 1884 is an act to promote agricultural homesteads, and that would do essentially that. The public hearing is Monday, the 14th, at, it's either 9:00 or 10:00 a.m., and staff's been asked to present some options for the council in March regarding that.
Okay, so that's at the state level?
It is a state law change, yep. Bruce Bickford and Speaker of the House Ryan Fecto had sponsored it.
So I wonder if we don't take it in our own hands as well, and look at it at a local level? It's just a discussion.
Hey, we'll, we'll support you on whatever discussion you want to.
So at, at the moment, we have a motion for a future action for the board chair, I mean, not for the board chair, for a discussion on the income standards in the ag zone. Do I have a second to that motion? Any debate on the motion? All in favor? Great, thank you. Any other items from members of the board? Nope, staff, what's coming up in March?
Yeah, I'd like, I don't know if I'm crossing a line here between board volunteer and staff duties, but I'll do it anyway. Mr. Bergeron's comments earlier about the communication with the, the public, it seems to come up quite a bit, so I don't know, it's not just the size of the map thing, but it seems to be a timing thing, and I do recognize that sometimes, I mean, you could have billboards and skywriters and newspaper things, and people would still say, "I've never seen it before," so I understand all that. But there's, I, I guess, I don't know if it's our job to review, probably isn't, how that information gets disseminated and the timing around such, but it seems to me that that is something that should not be overlooked.
I had a, I had a thought on that, I didn't want to bring up entirely earlier, because I don't think it's feasible, but I don't think adding a link is as helpful, because people have to type, especially those, the hyperlinks can get really long, but like a, you go to this, or, you know, the city webpage, you put in a link, and then from there, you go to this tab, and you go to this tab, and so they can open it up, but a really, and I don't think, I don't know that staff has the capability or the people to do this, but if there was a link that could be included that had almost what we get, like where it's, where it's like its own page, where it's a lot of things they could click through, but that would be, I think that'd be too much work for every item to have to up with its own, I just thought that would be really useful, but also probably not practical.
Everything we give you is on the website every month.
Yeah.
So we could try to make that link more visible, or we could even look at what's available for an easy-to-read link, like, you know, auburnplanningboardinfo.org.
Like a QR code, maybe?
We can do QR codes. We did that for this. This was the first meeting we've used a QR code, but we can now do a QR code on the notice. That's a great option on the public notice, for those that are familiar with QR codes.
Yeah, I think that's great.
And I think part of the, you know, part of the struggle is that, you know, we have to send the notices out 14 days in advance, we might not have all the paperwork developed. But I can tell you that the public notices were updated as we, you know, through the paper and then through calls, obviously, we, we let them know about the link. The paper, public notice, had the link for the websites, that you could go through each one of these individual dockets, including the PowerPoint presentation.
I saw it on Facebook.
So, and we posted, we posted on Facebook as well.
We had it pushed out on Facebook, I believe Twitter, and we had, it's on the events calendar with the links of the city as well as the front page.
And Riley, you know, I agree with you, it was hard to read, you know, we had 3,000 mailings, and I, I wanted to do eight pages, Eric says, no way, you know, we can't afford that, so, that's the truth.
It makes sense that you can't put everything in one packet, but that's why I think it would be expected to put it all on the link, so that you don't have to put out the paper copy.
Yeah, but sometimes the information's not, it's just not avail, you know, all of the information is not available yet either.
Well, so if you sent out, if you sent out a link to everybody, that link would be kind of dynamic, doesn't it? Does that have to stay the exact same 14 days?
No, you could, you could update it.
So that could be something you could send it out?
Yeah.
We explained that we would be continuously adding information to that link, but we sent it out before it was fully populated.
Yeah.
So I wonder, though, is that actually somewhat problematic, that when you're sending public notices, you don't have all the materials together? Like, is there a way to stretch out? Like, that seems suboptimal. That's not a critique of y'all, I know you work on very, very tight timelines, is there a way to actually adjust some of the timelines to make it more possible for you to have everything together?
I think that's, that's the balancing act, I guess.
Yep.
We're being pushed to have a fast timeline. The 14 days before the meeting, public notice is a statutory requirement.
Yeah, that's required, yeah.
So we can't shorten that 14 days. We might find out on Monday that, you know, two and a half weeks from now, we're expected to have something on a council agenda, and we have to send the notice and develop the materials as we approach that date. I think the alternative would be to say, "Sorry, it'll be the following month, and we'll get the notice and materials out really early."
I mean, I.
Well, I think, I think the, that's a great point. I think the alternative is, like, tonight, something gets tabled that perhaps shouldn't have, and could actually have fallen subject to an unfavorable outcome, depending on what side of the, of the issue you are, you're on. So I would, I would advocate for a more thorough, informative process over timeliness.
What on earth, and to your point, Mr. DeVal, I don't think it actually changes the timeframe at all, because you just have one hearing instead of two.
Well, but it, it does for three out of the four, that we were instructed to bring all those, well, two out of the four. We were instructed to bring you those on the, on a timeline that led to tonight. Two of them will be going to council before your next planning board meeting, whereas they would be in late March or April, had we not pushed for them to be on this, this schedule, so. I would love to have more time, I don't think that we will, you know, convince the mayor and council that more time is the answer. But we'll bring whatever message you have back to them. And there's a lot of good things happening, and it's hard to keep up with, but there are a lot of really positive changes that you guys are involved with on the zoning side, promoting housing, and that the council's doing, it's just aggressive timelines are challenging.
Yeah, well, it's clearly putting some stress on the system.
Yeah, for the public, for us, and as staff, and for the board.
For everybody, yep.
And that being said, I don't think that's a reflection on either of you, I think we're very fortunate to have such high-caliber staff.
Agree, 100%.
Even if you're not from around here, John.
I won't say that.
All right. Item number 13 is?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Yes, please.
Thank you very much for hearing that one last item. I know Mike Gatto here, representing John Jenrin's company, flew in from Florida just for today's meeting, so that was appreciated.